It's not up to.
Yes, sir.
Hail to order the May eighth, twenty twenty four Chaska Planning Commission meeting. Liz, would you make the roll?
Yep. Commissioner Austin.
Here.
Baswa. Campbell.
Here.
Lori.
Here.
Kerber.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Purdy.
Here.
Urbanski. And Chair person for us.
Here. With that, we'll move on.
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Purdy.
Second.
Olson, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed. And adopted. Uh, next on the agenda is visitor presentation. So this would be for anyone that's here tonight, I would like to speak to the planning commission on something that's not already covered on the agenda. So if you're on the agenda and you're here for something on this list, you can wait until we get to that subject. Otherwise, anyone else now would be the time. Anyone online? Are we still doing the online?
They are. Michelle, is there anyone online raising their hand?
Not for this.
Thank you.
Um, so nothing on visitor presentation movement. Do we need to roll him in? As far as we just.
No, I think the record will show that he came after all.
Uh, moving on to approve previous meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I second.
Aswin Aswa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And consent items, none. Action items, that would be seven A, which is postponed. So we'll move on to seven B, public hearing. Recommend approval of the concept plan for Jasper's Circle. PC twenty twenty four dash oh six. Liz, if you would take it from here.
Um, this one's going to go to Ashley and just bear with us for a little bit. Um, we're trying to pull up the presentation.
I will start and then the presentation will appear. How about that? We thought that we were going to be technologically advanced and we're going to have a separate computer, but that is turning out to not be working to our favor. It's combined. Okay, uh, before you this evening is a proposal by Todd Olin on behalf of Land Consulting, contemplating a concept plan for, uh, the property at eighteen seventy six Chestnut Street North. Uh, that'll be pulling up here. Just a moment.
Do you guys see that on your side?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so the, the city of Chaska has a three-step review process. Uh, the planning commissioners are well adverse to this as we go through this slide often. Uh, but for those in the room who may not be as familiar with this process, uh, there's three steps. Each of those steps, uh, comes before the planning commission and the city council for review and approval or denial. Uh, there are public hearings that happen at each one of those steps. Uh, we are tonight, uh, with the Jasper Circle Concept Plan, uh, in that first review. Uh, so the plans that you'll see this evening are high level. Uh, that means that staff and the city's review is also high level. Uh, so what we're doing in this phase is we are identifying any issues or items that we would like more information on, uh, in those later review processes. Uh, and it also gives the applicant an opportunity to hear, uh, some feedback from the planning commission, the city council, and then also, uh, residents from the area. So again, uh, if approved this evening, the plans would come back again before you, uh, at least two more times. The existing site, uh, is just under five acres. Uh, that does exclude some area that is encumbered by right-of-way, uh, under Highway forty-one. The highest point of the site, uh, is in the northeast corner of the property. Uh, there's also a high point that exists just to the south of this property. The lowest point, uh, is kind of in that northwest quadrant, they go there on the screen. A tree inventory hasn't been, uh, completed at this time. It would be as before the next review. Uh, generally those, you can see those trees, uh, that exist on the site clustered around, uh, those existing improvements. The concept plan before you this evening, uh, is for sixteen single-family residential lots. Uh, those lots would be accessed via a newly constructed street and utilities that would be extended from Willowood to the west, or excuse me, from the west. Uh, those stubs, if you will, uh, for utilities and, uh, these, the right-of-way that have temporary turnarounds, uh, were created in nineteen ninety-seven as part of the Willowood development, uh, in anticipation of this site's development. The lots as part, as currently contemplated, uh, range in size from roughly six thousand up to uh, just over sixteen thousand square feet in size. And the lot widths range from fifty feet up to eighty-seven feet. The plan also includes a small remnant outlot, uh, in the northwest corner of the site. And then also a right-of-way extension to allow for, uh, right-of-way extension into those northern lots. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, later in my presentation. The developer has anticipated, uh, custom-built homes for these lots. Uh, those homes would range in size from just over two thousand to about three thousand square feet. Uh, it'd be a mix of one to two stories, uh, with two and three-car garages. And they're targeting price points starting, uh, around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And those four, uh, house types on the bottom of the screen is what was submitted by the applicant, uh, as examples for what to expect within the development. The developer hosted a neighborhood meeting in December of last year. Uh, that meeting was well-attended. Uh, there were roughly fifty people that attended and provided comments, uh, and also asked questions about the development. At that time, there was a seventeen-lot plan that was shown, and again, the one before you is sixteen lots. Uh, residents that attended that meeting, uh, generally inquired and commented about the housing types and price points, lots, lot counts and sizes, noise mitigation and traffic access onto Highway forty-one, as well as stormwater and drainage. Uh, they also requested an increased buffer in the southwest corner of the site. And then also asked questions about construction timing, uh, and development of those northern properties. Now, this again is a pretty generalized summary, uh, that was taken from, uh, the summary that was provided by the developer. There are a number of residents here this evening. Um, I anticipate they may have some additional comments for, uh, regarding that neighborhood meeting. Also included in your packet this evening was a number of written comments submitted, uh, by area residents. Uh, those comments, uh, generally express concerns related to, uh, the proposed density and lot configurations. Uh, they express concerns related to the increased traffic, uh, from the new lots as well as access. And finally, uh, they were generally requested further consideration uh, for integration of the new development into the existing neighborhood context. Excuse me, one second. Uh, so now to go through some of the analysis, uh, that was included in your staff report for this evening. Uh, first is the property is currently zoned, uh, over open development. Uh, it's anticipated that if the project were to move forward, it would include a rezoning to PRD, so the planned residential district. The comp plan does guide this property for low density and, oh, excuse me, that's a carryover, low density. Uh, the guided density, uh, for low density by the comp plan is a range from two units per acre up to five units per net acre. The proposal as it is today, uh, is three point three units per acre, so, uh, just within that range. As I previously noted, um, the neighbors have expressed concerns, uh, related to the size and width of the proposed lots when compared to the surrounding development. Uh, this, the screen is probably a little bit small, but this was included in your staff report, uh, for this evening. Development, uh, within the surrounding area began in the early nineteen seventies. Uh, that first one was North Gate First, uh, which is oops, moving my Well, I'm not going to touch it, but it is the, uh, it's the orange highlighted one, uh, in just to the south of the site. Uh, through the two thousands, which was the Willowood Second, uh, to the north, uh, kind of that northern red area. Generally, however, uh, development within this area primarily occurred within the eighties and the nineties. Uh, the average lot uh, size in Willowood, which is the development just to the west of this site, but again, provided, uh, the stubs for access to the subject property. Uh, the lot sizes are, uh, roughly sixteen, six hundred square feet in size. The development density is right at two, so on the lower end of the guided density for this area. And at the time of development, uh, the targeted sale for the lot and home at the time of construction uh, was between a hundred and ninety thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The market values and recent sales within the development today hover right around, uh, the mid-fours to six hundreds. Again, there, there are outliers on either end of it, but, uh, that generally, uh, summarizes that neighborhood. Uh, so I think it's important to note, and this is included in your staff report, uh, for this evening, uh, that staff acknowledges that the lots on the concept plan are smaller, uh, but I'll also offer that those smaller lots, uh, result in smaller homes that are generally at a more affordable price point. And that's generally supported, um, by, uh, one second, let's go back here. Uh, so as part of the Willowood development in nineteen ninety-seven, uh, there was a ghost plat that was submitted to the city, uh, by the developer of Willowood. Uh, a ghost plat, again, as the planning commission knows, doesn't guarantee future development propos, or approvals, uh, but they're used as a tool by the city to review access and development potentials of surrounding properties that will develop in the future. Uh, the development cost to develop, uh, the subject property as shown in that ghost plat at half the density that's proposed this evening, uh, would be substantially higher and inevitably increase the price of those. And this is generally supported, um, by some recent developments, or these are the recent developments within the last two years approved by the planning commission and city council, uh, within the city of Chaska. Reserve at Autumn Woods back in twenty twenty-two, uh, did have some lots, so there was a housing type that dropped down to lot widths in that fifty-foot wide range. Uh, and those housing prices were in the four fifties. As you, those lot sizes and those lot widths increased, uh, in those other developments, you can also see that those price points, uh, for, uh, the targeted price point at the time of sale also increased. Uh, Carleton Bluffs, uh, which is also on tonight's agenda, uh, is that second bullet there. Uh, their average lot size is point four-two acres. Uh, their lot width on the narrow end is sixty-one feet wide. And just for perspective and context, uh, their targeted price point is north of eight hundred. Uh, the neighbors have expressed concerns, uh, related to traffic. Uh, existing traffic patterns within the neighborhood take a hundred and twenty-seven trips from those single-family homes. Uh, or excuse me, trips from a hundred and twenty-seven single-family homes, uh, on that existing roadway network to Angler Boulevard, which is classified as an A minor expander. Uh, the proposed development, uh, could add roughly another hundred and fifty cars to that existing roadway network. Uh, but s, information and calculations provided by the IT uh, supports that the existing roadway network could accommodate that additional traffic. And additionally, uh, Carver County, Mid-Not, and the city of Chaska are collaborating, uh, and to identify and implement vehicular and pedestrian improvements along Angler Boulevard. Uh, that is the plan that was shown on the Carver County's website on that bottom side of the screen. There's a roundabout that is proposed for the White Oak and Angler Boulevard intersection, uh, to further improve safety and efficiency at that intersection. Proposed setbacks this evening, while different than the surrounding neighborhood, are generally similar to other setbacks uh, reviewed and approved by the planning commission for recent developments. Uh, the applicant has expressed a willingness, uh, to, uh, increase front yard setbacks, and they've provided supplemental information, is included in your packet, that does talk about that. And I anticipate that they'll, they'll speak to that this evening as well. Uh, the applicant, as required, uh, did submit a ghost plat, uh, contemplating development of the two properties north of the subject property. This plan, uh, contemplates an additional twelve lots. And while those exact lot sizes weren't provided, it appears that they're generally similar, uh, to the proposed concept plan before you this evening. Uh, more review, uh, would be required, uh, but generally the ghost plat shows that access could be provided to those two northerly properties. Uh, one of, there have been some questions raised by neighbors about whether or not the new development could have permanent access onto Highway forty-one. Uh, so staff had reached out and continued conversations uh, with Mid-Not, uh, and while Mid-Not has expressed that they would not allow permanent access either in the pole, uh, partial or full nature, uh, they are willing to accept a temporary construction access, uh, during the time of construction of the site, which ultimately shifts that heavy construction traffic from that localized roadway network to the west, uh, out to the east, onto Highway forty-one. Uh, Mid-Not has also expressed, uh, that a noise wall would likely not be required. Uh, they should do a noise study, uh, just to confirm that, uh, but they did en, uh, encourage a landscape berm along those easterly lots, so three through nine, uh, just to provide boring noise mitigation. Uh, so shortly before the distribution of the packet, uh, the applicant did submit some supplemental information. Again, that was included in your packet for this evening, uh, that did show some additional, uh, landscaping along the western edge. So this is divided, uh, there are sections, uh, but you can see some additional landscaping on that northern end, and then again, on that southern end. Included in the change memo, uh, this evening was some language, uh, intending to just strengthen, uh, that, uh, encouragement to provide that, that buffering, uh, between the existing neighborhood and the proposed development. Uh, so with that, uh, staff is recommending approval this evening. I'm going to turn it back to you, Chair, uh, for any questions. And again, um, I think there's a number of residents here this evening, and I anticipate that a number of them would like to speak as well.
If you actually, uh, so just to kind of make it formal here, so I'm going to bring it back to commission. We're going to discuss and have questions amongst ourselves with the city. Is a public hearing at that point, after we've gone through our questions initially, kind of talking it through, I'll open up the public hearing. And at that point, anyone who would like to address the commission, residents would come forward and do it at that time. So at this point, let's bring it back to here, open it up amongst commissioners for questions, comments, and discussion. I'll, see, I'll go last to let someone go.
Did I see in here, what was the average size of the neighboring homes? Um, the average square feet of the neighboring homes?
Hello?
Yeah, the one directly.
The two, yeah.
Right to the west of it.
Yeah. You didn't see a square, average square foot of a current neighbor?
Chair and commissioners, I don't know that I have the exact square footage. Um, we actually walked this neighborhood uh, a month ago to the date. I would say that they're kind of roughly in that same range in terms of square footage as the concept plan, but, uh, perhaps some of the neighbors could, could say it. If I had to guess just by based on their outside, I would say in the three range.
My lot is point eight-three five, so.
It's
To nowhere near.
Chair and commissioner, uh, you're, you're speaking specifically though about the house size, not the lot size.
Correct, correct.
I'm not dressed herself, but
So, sorry, um, so I'm, I'm
Again, we're going to do it here first. We're going to discuss and then, I understand you guys want to talk and help. I appreciate that, but we'll bring you up and can interest the commission, say your name and address. Um, so appreciate it for everyone out there, but, uh, you discuss it here first.
Actually, a question on the traffic side. So on the table, it showed the, the local streets. I, I get the fact of Angler will be able to handle the traffic. We, I don't think there's any question on that. But the local street, it shows that it's already past its capacity or its desired capacity of a thousand trips per day as it sits right now. And that's because the original plan for White Oak Drive was to connect up to Bavaria Road. And since that, I don't believe is going to happen, all these cars are going to come down White Oak. So we're talking about adding sixteen now and the additional twelve, possibly later. It seems like a lot considering the local street is already at, at its capacity, over its capacity. So I, I guess I'm questioning, are those numbers right? Is, is, is that a determination to help balance the number of potential lots and houses and cars that are actually going to be added to that street?
Chair and commissioner, uh, so the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the IT, uh, that information is collected from single-family home trips across the country. And so, single-family homes, we know are some of the highest generators of trips when it comes to residential properties. And it's essentially, it is a calculation based on that, but there's ranges within that. So there's residential developments that are on the, very much on the low end of that range, and then they on the high end. So the, the numbers and what was used for the calculation is kind of that, uh, median, so that middle of the range, if you will. And then the trips that, uh, the typical average daily traffic volumes, uh, those numbers, the ranges prescribed to the roadway classifications come from the comprehensive guide plan. And so what we know is we, the data from the IT, there's several things that have happened since twenty seventeen, which is the most recent data that I, we had available to calculate based on. The pandemic, um, greatly changed how the number of vehicles, you know, working from home became, uh, more prominent. And so that has lowered overall, uh, the number of trips that are coming in and out of single-family homes. Um, and then also the, uh, there's also alternative transportation options that have become more available that people are utilizing to get to work. So the twenty seventeen data, uh, IT will tell you that those numbers are high, uh, as they are. Uh, we just didn't have the more recent data available.
Right, but I guess my question is, is the city actually using that information to actually make decisions and recommendations for density and, and growth in certain areas where there is obvious constraints that are on specific local roadways?
Chair and commissioner, certainly, you know, the engineering, the public works department are, are very aware of, you know, traffic volumes. And when the comprehensive guide plan is coming forward, local roadway volumes and that traffic volume coming from the comp plan is certainly contemplated as part of those densities that are included in the comprehensive plan. So in, that was a long way to say yes.
And I just want to add, so, because we've been through this a couple of times with four, and, and four people in the crowd. The guidelines aren't a pass fail. It's not, well, if you have over a thousand, you can't have any more cars on the road. It's general acceptance of what is optimal, but it's not a right or wrong. It's not a pass fail type scenario. Just to kind of educate the crowd, it's not, it's not a hard stop type of situation, correct?
Thank you, yes.
Well, having two roundabouts that close together, I think that would create a lot of traffic. People going into Holiday, turning left off of anger going down. I, I just, I don't know, I, I, I live in that somewhere near that neighborhood, neighborhood, and it's very crowded in the mornings and at night. So I have some concerns about the two roundabouts being that close. And then we're going to have a third roundabout at Bavaria and Angler.
See, that's funny. I'm, I'm, I'm the opposite. I think the roundabouts, I used to live down the road from this area too, but I think the roundabouts will help, and the, the whole idea is help alleviate that traffic. So you're not sitting, people trying to come out of the road coming in a quick trip. I can't think of the road off the top of my head, but it's at White Oak.
White Oak, yeah.
Um, I don't know. In my mind, I mean, I, I think the whole idea with Mid-Not and with the city is that those roundabouts are going to free up some of the congestion, and it should, because they're not stopping completely. So I would hope it would happen. I think that's the idea.
Yeah, I just see a lot of people turning left on White Oak.
Well, I know.
Down to Holiday.
Unfortunately, a lot of people don't understand how to use roundabouts.
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're still new to a lot of people.
By the Gulf, Tom course, and I got to use two of them every day, um. But hopefully they would alleviate some traffic. Um, I could imagine coming out of this neighborhood in the morning, there's probably a line, and so I would think it would go quicker. Um, that is again, separate from this development, or, you know, this is coming in the future. I think it's showing for uh, knowledge of what will be, you know, but what will be, um, help alleviate some of that traffic.
So I'm glad that we provide the ghost plats for potential possibilities. And granted, now we're talking something that was twenty-plus years ago. But as a resident coming into this neighborhood, knowing that there's going to be development in the future because there's two cul-de-sacs and there's been discussion as into what's going to, how it's going to come. because there's two cul-de-sacs and there's been discussion as into what's going to, how it's going to complete. But they made their purchasing decisions based on what was available to them at the time, which was that ghost plat. This plan is significantly different from the ghost plat. And I have, we'll just say, a lot of heartburn with the size, with the density that's coming through with this, even before reading the the neighbors' complaints because of the significant difference from the ghost plat that was provided. Now, granted, things change, but everybody that lives in that neighborhood, that's what they based their decision on, because that's what was available to them.
Expand on that, because I've spoken city about this.
But, but I mean, my, my, my question is, back to the staff side of things is, why wasn't, they, they talk about in the report going from twenty-five to twenty-one to seventeen, but that's still two and three times more than what was originally designed. And now, granted, things change, but why wasn't there more emphasis on trying to be closer towards that end versus what actually got presented and then changed after the neighborhood meeting?
Chair and Commissioner, that's a question that should be directed to the applicant. I don't want to speak on their behalf for why they, they move forward with it. You know, they had the seventeen lot plan that they showed to the neighbors, the sixteen lot plan that they're here before you this evening. And, and I think I'd reserve that question for them.
So staff didn't do anything to promote using the ghost plat? Or using the previous, previously identified plating to help drive the development of this, this area?
Well, if, Chair and Commissioner, if, if someone, if a developer were to come into the city and inquiring about developing a property, staff will provide them with an, with the ghost plat, if there is one available to the property. In fact, we do that on a relatively regular basis. But at the end of the day, staff can't, staff can advocate to support a ghost plat for reasons X, Y, and Z. But at the end of the day, the applicant has their own right and their, to move forward with the plan that, that they would like to come before you.
Yeah, so that's where I wanted to expand on, and I have, you know, we'll get into about mixed feelings about some parts of this development myself. But the ghost plats, and I've already voiced my displeasure with the city, I don't like them in general, actually, because this is what happens. Someone, and so the developer way back when put a ghost plat forward, and he doesn't own the land. Like, you know, he put it, someone else, and it's just like what's going to happen on this development for Jasper Circle, there's a ghost plat going down for the property to the north. And he has, like, this ghost plat's coming in and has no person who's going to come do that later had no say in that. So it kind of puts like a false sense of what's happening, and I actually don't like ghost plats because of that. I think it might create confusion with residents, because the person previous is not the fee simple property owner of that, doesn't have, you know, they don't have the right to do that. Per se, it's just a placeholder, if you will. And so if a developer or someone, an applicant or buyer comes in to purchase some land, and they follow within the ordinances and can develop something that fits within our rules that are out there in the public, that's fine, and if it goes against the ghost plat, I mean, that's the problem, is I can see that there's a perceived sense that that ghost plat was there, or that's what's going to happen. But that's just someone's drawing, filling out a placeholder. So I don't like them. I, I think it's something I want to talk about further going on with the city, you know, how we, there's something, somewhere we can address that. Because I think it gives a false sense of security to other people in the area for vacant land. Any other questions for city staff?
So, yeah, one thing, like, this kind of scenarios, right? Like ghost plat or like maybe the same developer was owning the land before, and they tried to put some maybe phase two, phase three, whatever the land, our open lot. So after a few years and a different kind of concept, or like some townhomes and the apartment, let's say. I mean, the, the developer requested to rezonate and put an apartment on, next to that lot. So how the city is protecting whoever is buying at that point of time? Let's say I'm planning to come into this city and planning to buy a home. Yeah, the builder will give all the necessary things, okay, this is going to happen, this is the square footage and all. What is going to be my adjacent, at least they will give some outlier, but like, it could change. So, but they don't have that idea when they are buying it. But like, after ten years, you see a big building next to your house, and suddenly you, every day you end up seeing that, right? So how do we, I mean, how do we give some guidelines or something for the developers to say to protect whoever is buying at this point of time, right? Do we have any measures or any details we are giving that way? So that like, whoever is buying right now can be protected or like feel happy after ten years or fifteen years? That could change, right? Right now, the lot size is like five, maybe five lots per acre. Maybe because of some, some, some reasons, it might change ten lots. So how do we protect current buyers or current people who wanted to come into our city? And how do we protect that?
Sure, Chair and Commissioner, that's, that's a really great question. And ultimately, that's, that's what the comprehensive guide plan is, is intended to do. So that sets a, an expectation of what that density range is. If a developer comes in with a proposal that doesn't fall within that range, there's an extensive process that they have to go through in order to re-guide that property to something else. And then, so there's, there's that, there's a guide for this, a ghost plat that ultimately shows that, you know, someone at some point in time contemplated single family residential on this property. At the time, in nineteen ninety-seven, they anticipated eight lots that were larger than the lots that they were showing within the Willowood development. So COM Plan, you know, I think ghost plats are a tool. They're not the end all be all in terms of an expectation. And then, in this case, the property is zoned, open development. So there's an expectation that it would be rezoned in the future, which then begins this process, which ultimately allows area residents an opportunity to provide feedback on any change in that development.
So at that time in nineteen ninety-seven, like, do we have anything saying like, these many pla, plots are like, these many things can be there in like one single acre? Is, is it changed over a period of time with the city, or it remains same from nineteen ninety-seven to now?
Chair and Commissioner, so this specific, so the subject property didn't have an anticipated number of lots, because there's, there's not a zoning district that essentially prescribes what those lot sizes and lot areas would be, that, that happens as part of this process. So the, in nineteen ninety-seven, there was the guide plan. I think we can probably find out what it was guided for. I anticipate it was low density residential. I don't, I'm not aware that that had changed, but we can certainly confirm.
And we still have low density residential. It's just not, I mean, clearly with the letters in the packet and the people here tonight, the opposition is how much low, low density residential, right? It falls within the guidelines, it is low density residential, it is, it is a neighborhood, it's just whether it's a few houses more than what they want to see, you know, so.
Yeah, my, my point is like, if you remember, we did the similar kind of thing once, like, we need to have some thirty feet from the end of the construction to the road. And because the house is there, and we always follow the grandfather ones, right? Like, if nineteen ninety-seven, there are different guidelines and that changed over a period of time. I mean, do we need to consider that, those guidelines, or do we need to consider the current guidelines? That is what I just wanted to understand, so. Because it's within the same, I mean, the development place, right, so.
Chair and Commissioner Vaswa, I think I understand the question you're asking. What we're, what we're held to at this point in time is the COM Plan, comprehensive plan that exists, right? So I don't think it has changed in this specific area since nineteen ninety-seven. I would need to go back to be confident of that a hundred percent, but I'm pretty positive. But even, even if it were something different then, you know, what we're, what we're measuring this application against is the comprehensive plan that is currently in place, it's been approved by council, which is what we're showing here. You know, big picture, comprehensive plans do and can change in how they guide property. And, you know, that ends up being a reflection of the community's values at the time that they're put together. And I could, you know, go on and on about that. But I think in this case that we're talking about here, to distill it back to the conversation we're having tonight, what's in place is that guidance for single family in our comprehensive plan. And it, and this has been guided for a single family neighborhood for a good amount of time at this point.
Just real quick, the styles of the homes are very similar to the existing homes, judging from the elevation exhibits.
Chair and Commissioner, based on our field surveying of the neighborhood, I would say that they're generally pulling architectural features from those existing homes.
Commissioners over here, questions? No? All right. Open up the public hearing at seven thirty-nine. And I would like to address first the crowd, so I don't know who's all here for this versus Hazelteen. If someone comes up before you and says something of the nature that is exactly what you wanted to say for the sake of the other applicants tonight behind this on the, on the agenda, please let them say that for you instead of coming up and reiterating a second or a third time, because that does happen. And so that would be it. Whoever would like to address the commission can do so now.
Chair and Commissioner, I'd also like to remind them to say their name and how they sound.
Will do, thank you. Someone got to be first, come on. Yep, and please say your name and address for the.
My name is Fred Koyvemaki. My address is two seven six Jasper Circle, North. And basically, my concern is the density, because what you're looking at is putting lots that are twice as dense in that way in a small area. You're putting sixteen plats in an area that accommodates as Willowood neighborhood is now. Roughly about eight, maybe nine, if we want to stretch it a little bit, in the current density. So with the goals, it says, number three, work within the existing neighborhood character to support the community values of current residents. I'm not sure if they actually did that. I've got a number of current residents here, and most of them are shaking their heads, no, they didn't consult us. There are a couple of things here.
Who are you reading from, can you?
I did go to the meeting, the open meeting. I did go to the open meeting, but our concerns, I think specifically about the density, were washed over at best. Okay? The other thing is the aesthetics of it. You're going to put homes that have an offset of ten, five feet on each side, which means you can have homes ten feet together. I measured the closest home to ours, which is like twenty-two feet, maybe, maybe twenty-five feet, the closest. And the offset from the road, from our garage to the road, is forty feet, not twenty feet. So if we have these homes at the end of Jasper Circle, aesthetically, it's going to change the whole character of the neighborhood. You've got two circles, circle north, circle south, and then the complete circle, where you've got these homes that are really, really close together, and aesthetically, it's going to be horrible. So I guess that's all I'll be able to say.
Okay. My name is Lou Pomeroy, and I live at two two five Jasper Circle. We will be three houses down from the new development. I would like to agree with him on the density issues. Also, it is not consistent to the neighborhood in either size or style of homes from what I, from what I looked at. I know she said it is, but I, you can't tell from the drawings, for sure. But the, but the size of the lots is totally inconsistent. I cannot, anyway. They sent out a thing with the pictures of other how, other developments in Chaska, we got this yesterday, of smaller houses and larger houses. Every single example is in Clover Ridge, which was designed and set up for an intermingling of these different sizes. And this is a much smaller spot to add on to the existing Willowood. And so I don't think that this is any kind of representative, representation of what is going to go up from us, because it's going to be our houses with generous lots, followed by these small itty-bitty with, I think somebody said, half as much space forward and half, you know, much less space wide. So it's not consistent in any way. Another thing that I don't, did anybody talk to the fire department? I know when the Southwest Christian was built and White Oak stopped, they were concerned at the time about the fact that that didn't go through. They don't like having a neighborhood where there's only one way, White Oak, in and out. In some ways, maybe this would help that, but that was a concern with the fire department back then, so.
May I ask her a question?
Yeah, for sure.
If you don't mind, what's the square footage of your home? Not the lot, okay, thank you.
Three thousand one hundred.
Right, thank you.
With a nice generous garden and lot in the back. And I've heard this thing said, that people today don't want lawns and, and gardens. You know, I have four children between thirty and forty, and they all would die to have a lawn and a garden. I don't see them looking for smaller homes with smaller plots. I see them looking for bigger plots.
Very popular.
Thank you.
Ashley, remind me again, do we get fire life safety involved at the concept level?
Correct, Chair. The staff report is really the summary of a consortium of comments and review from all of the city departments.
Good evening, thank you for your time. I'm Neil Pomeroy. I'm with that lady right there. I live in the same house, so. Yes, two two five, Jasper's. I just want to make two additional different comments, if I may. One, we moved in into, in two thousand and one in that. And the clear expectation from the realtors who were selling that was that ghost plat. They will finish this at some point, we'll use similar houses and be five to seven houses up there. That was the selling point. I know several people bought thinking of that vision. And I think it's a mistake to make a comparison in the supplemental material that you got of comparing this to other neighborhoods that you have approved. Because that'd be like, you put a hotel over here, so we're going to put a hotel on this. No, that, that's not the way it's done. You have to do it within the neighborhood as it exists. And one other, a small comment, I'm agreeing with the concerns about the traffic. I mean, I try to get out of there, thankfully, I'm blessed to be retired. I don't go out there at eight thirty in the morning or seven in the morning unless I have to. And then coming home, same thing. And the reason, I mean, I've sat at that intersection of White Oak for five minutes, and the traffic is backed up beyond White Oak, and all the traffic's coming up from Bavaria. It, I'm not sure, the interesting thing to me in this presentation that was done for these roundabouts, the number one issue they are trying to deal with was not traffic. It was to prevent serious accidents. Okay, great, but where was improved traffic flow? The very last item on the list of benefits of that. So that being the case, and I used to work up off on PV Road, and I've been up on that roundabout. And I've waited way longer there to get on that roundabout, and we haven't even finished Costco yet. And I've waited way longer there to get on that roundabout and we haven't even finished Costco yet. So I don't know if you guys have any involvement with the roundabouts, but I'm just saying the whole traffic thing, and I've never seen a neighborhood, actually several neighborhoods only have one exit. And that was the thing that we opposed when they were doing the Southwest Christian High School, which we love those guys, but there's no secondary exit. So that's my concern. Thank you for your time.
I'm Rita Larson. I live at two forty Oak View Court. Um, we happen to be at the top of the hill when you come in off of um, White Oak. And I have a real safety concern out of the traffic. When people come up that hill, um, it can be very fast. There's a lot of blind spots where we come out on North Gate. Um, if you have someone who has parked a vehicle on the corner, you have to get so far out into the intersection. And I've done everything from walk a dog to drive there. And there's always traffic coming in and out. So I'm not only concerned that we're going to put sixteen new homes. Um, I don't have the density concerns, whatever. The neighborhood is different than ours. Um, but if we're going to add sixteen homes and then another twelve or fourteen and we only have one way in or out, we have that creek running through there, we've had floods through there. Um, I'm, I'm concerned about the safety issues. Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Lee Rosted. I live at two zero five Jasper Circle. At the end of one of these roads, this new construction, all these people will be my direct neighbors. I know you asked us not to reiterate points, but have to touch on again the density. Sixteen, there are twenty-two houses total between Jasper Circle North and Jasper Circle South. Not the entire Willowood development. There's a few more that are on White Oak. But Jasper Circle, North and South combined have twenty-two houses total. Adding sixteen is a seventy-two percent increase. Additionally, getting past this density thing. Um, at the previous meeting, the developers stated that this new plan to extend from the two Jasper Circles and combine them would be a completely uh, different development than what's existing because the Willowood development does have existing guidelines for uh, lot size setbacks, all that stuff. PRD thirty-three ordinance number one, uh, it's ordinance number six one four, which I believe is in the packet somewhere. Um, and this assertion of theirs that because it's a new development, they can build the houses in this lot sizes and whatever, however they want, seems a little ridiculous to me because it could not possibly be a new development if it's directly attached to an existing one. That seems to me that's saying like, if you go to a mad scientist and get a third arm added, that's not your arm. But it is because it's attached to what was already there. We all know, everyone here, everyone on the street, everyone in the neighborhood knows this area is going to be developed and we've known it for a long time. That's not the issue. The issue is the issue is not the development. It's not the houses being built. We know that's going to happen. It's the number of houses. It will screw up the character of the neighborhood, the charm, to have more houses crammed in less space. And if they do the additional twelve that they're talking about, that's over a hundred percent increase in density in this area. We know that it's going to happen. We just want it to fit in with the neighborhood a little better and, and match what's there rather than, you know, all these new neighbors, all this new traffic, and now the neighborhood sucks. Pardon my French. We would like just to keep the character and the quality of the neighborhood as it is. And sixteen houses, twenty-eight more houses will ruin that. Hundred percent. Thank you.
I got a question.
Sure.
You've spoken with neighborhood, a lot, or chance you guys have communicated. Just for knowledge sakes, if sixteen's too many, how many? What makes it acceptable? Like, have you guys kind of come up
Ten, somewhere in there.
Eight, ten.
Ghost plat, plat, uh, not set in stone. I know what you were saying too.
Clearly, they have no right to dictate a future property owner.
No, they certainly don't. However, yeah, uh, it's, there are guidelines as noted in the, the, the existing uh, PRD six one four, whatever. Uh, so yeah, but yeah, you know, eight, ten, somewhere in there, totally fine. Uh, sixteen would be far too much, far too much. Uh, if you've been in the, the neighborhood and seen the space, it's, it, sixteen houses would be ridiculous. It would look, they would be so crammed in. It would just ruin the character and the look of the neighborhood. Forever. Thank you for your time.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Paul Price. I'm at two seven three Jasper Circle, uh, North. Uh, two additional concerns. I agree with everything that's been brought here today. Uh, the two things that I would add to that is, uh, once a pretty big safety concern, there's a public park. And that public park is on White Oak, uh, White Oak, as you drive into the neighborhood. As you come into the neighborhood, it's downhill, so you're constantly fighting gravity. And then you hit the curve, which is kind of a blind curve, and boom, you're right at the park. Little kids, there's no parking for this park. All the parking is on the street, so they park on the other side of the street, wherever there's parking available. So you have these kids darting in and out in between these cars. Right now, it's already, there's enough traffic to make it dangerous for these kids. You go ahead and you add that kind of density, that's going to make that area even less safe. Uh, the other thing that I'd add is, um, uh, when we have, a, a couple of times, we've had some bad storms that have blown down branches and they blocked White Oak. That's a terrifying feeling to be in your neighborhood and you can't get out. Especially when, when bad weather is underway and everything. All it takes is one branch to close down the entire neighborhood. Um, so an alternate out onto forty, forty-one would be great. I know we can't go the other direction, um, but I just, you know, expressing to you that it's, it's a serious deal when you're trapped into your neighborhood uh, because of some high winds and down branches. So that and that, that public park, that park is right up on the road. I mean, and there's no parking lot there. It's a, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. So thanks for your time.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Hy. I, I'm at three zero three Grove Drive. Um, I do, I brokered land development deals across the metro. I've done that for fifteen years. Um, so I do feel compelled to at least share my perspective on this. Um, I'm not going to reiterate everything from that my neighbors have. I'll take a different perspective, although I agree one hundred percent with everything they've said. Um, and also they stole every point I wanted to make. So thank you. I'll hats up. Um, I want to emphasize a little bit on the comp plan and that in, yes, it provides a guideline, but every site stands by itself. You know, this is not another ten acre. This is not another fifty acre farm that opens up for development. This is what I would almost refer to as infill site for Chaska. This is a continuation of a neighborhood. It's a continuation of Jasper's. It is not something where you're going to say, okay, two to five acres, you know, let's work with you if you're at six, let's, you know, you know, if you're at three, rubber stamp it. That doesn't work. And because they're in that range, you don't rubber stamp it. You look at the neighborhood and you see, does this fit? Does this work? Does this feel right? And so I would take an emphasis on the comp plan and really look at that for what it is as it relates to this specific site for this specific neighborhood. Um, what I would probably say next is related to the ghost plat. And we've talked a little bit about that. We go from eight to sixteen. The ghost plat for the future northern portion of this development shows twelve. What's to say in twenty-five years that that twelve now becomes twenty-four? You know, because we're at double what the previous gold class was, plat was. So I would just, you know, you're going to set a precedent here uh, with your action and, you know, I highly recommend the developer if he so feels he wants to table it and meet with some of the neighborhoods on Ja, the neighbors on Jasper's and really have a thorough discussion on some of the sticking points. Um, but you know, as, the answer is no, and we want to proceed here, I think, you know, his answer is pretty clear that it's, he's going to pump the density into, you know, profits over people. And it's just unfortunate that that is the case sometimes. Um, but here, this is, this is my neighborhood. Even though I'm on Grove's Drive, this is still my neighborhood and that's why I felt so compelled to at least share my thoughts. So, thank you.
I'll, before you move on, I'm just going to pose the question to the people online. If there's anyone online that wishes to speak, you can raise your hand in Zoom and we can allow you to speak. You're not seeing anyone.
Last chance, anyone else want to speak on this matter? Okay, so at seven fifty-nine, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for final discussion. Um, so we'll do that. If anyone have any questions, comments, discussion.
Developer here?
That's actually fair. I didn't even, I might have to open it back up. Or he can address the, he can address it. Would the developer like to step forward or have any? Nope, thank you. Thanks, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um, my name is Todd Olin. I'm with Landed Resource Consulting. Uh, we're the ones that prepared the plan and are working on behalf of Gabinet Properties for this development. Um, your planning staff did a a very comprehensive job on all the different details and I'm not going to, I'm not going to review all that or, or bore you with all that repetitiveness. But there were a couple of questions that I would like to address. Um, first, the uh, as far as the density and uh, the fit and the, you know, when, when we came in initially, we looked at different layouts and different housing types and, and whatnot, and then walked, walked the neighborhood and tried to, you know, feel what it felt like and uh, we all, I live in a neighborhood. Um, we all live in neighborhoods. Uh, and as you walk further and further around this neighborhood, further out, it does, the density does transition up and down. Uh, initially, our transition we were looking at is just increasing some uh, some separation between the houses. And we actually played with, well, why don't we increase the separation between the houses and then, then neck it down because there is a limited space that we're dealing with between where the end of the roads are and where Highway forty-one is. And we, um, and by the time you get done with uh, incorporating stormwater design and all the other design that's normally not done in a ghost plat, you end up with what you end up with. There are certain requirements you have to meet. There aren't, it's not a, those are pass or fail. Um, so when we're looking at this developer personally, purchasing the land, what fits here, uh, met with your staff, felt the better approach was to, and having had a neighborhood meeting, uh, in hearing what the neighbor said, is that a couple of neighbors that were most impacted were immediately next to this new development. Um, so we positioned the stormwater basin where it is so that there's a maximum separation between the existing home and the new homes. We also dropped a lot from what we presented at the neighborhood meeting and didn't just re-space them all between the houses that are proposed. We increased the separation between the existing home that's closest on the south and the new home to fifty feet. And the separation between the homes, I think one of the neighbors said, was about twenty-two feet. And it does range between twenty and thirty feet all the way through the existing neighborhood right now. So, um, so that, we did look at transition. We did look at, uh, we did change the plans to incorporate buffers with landscaping as well. Um, you know, we have been very successful and other developers that transition in and out of these types of densities, they fit well in these communities. Um, but when we start looking at the changes from nineteen ninety-seven to today, and unfortunately some economics that play a big part, if we put those standard lot sizes in there and you have comps for the existing homes that are built ninety-seven or two thousand or whatever it was, that it really doesn't fit, like building a shack doesn't fit there. We have to, uh, you know, if we go with a bigger lot, we have to, we have to put the cost in the lot. And then bigger homes get built. And then those bigger homes don't fit, just like really, really small homes don't. So what we're trying to do is find this balance and transition that works for everybody. And we're, I'm not saying we're exactly there and I'm not going to convince all the neighbors that it is what it is, but um, that's what went into this. That's what, that's why we have the plan laid out the way we do. We tried to maximize the buffers. Um, you know, again, we, we put these in nice communities where they're very successful. Uh, you know, and Medina and, and Woodbury. And I'm not saying you guys are that. I'm just saying it, that in other areas there is um, these transition in and out, and these are folks buying the houses that are sometimes first time homeowners. And in other cases, they're uh, professionals that don't want to take care of a big yard uh, or have a smaller family than they had in nineteen ninety-seven. Um, and in this area, it happens to be really well-supported with public infrastructure. So the need for all the yard space isn't there uh, because you have a, a really extensive trail system. You have parks that are located uh, here and there and everywhere in the vicinity of this neighborhood. Um, so, so that, a, a lot of different features were incorporated in this, in the wise and what for us and how we got here. Um, the, I do want to spend a little bit of time on the comp plan because a, a key part of that comp plan is oftentimes not mentioned in that when a comp plan is updated, it is, it includes the community to develop that comp plan. It isn't just staff or it isn't just dictated. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, your staff goes way, way out of its way to not only, and I'm not sure exactly what the process was here, but in most cases, there's neighborhood meetings in all different areas of this city to get different neighborhood perspectives. What are the girls' patterns? Where are the pressures at? And how do we get there from here? And how do we maintain and protect what's there, what's invaluable to us? That's how the campaign plan came to be, or part of it anyway. And we fit within that comp plan guide. Now, does that, does that whole range fit in this neighborhood? No. Um, it's allowed or guided with two to five units per acre and we're at three point three per acre. So we are in that middle. We're not on the high side. We're not on the low side, but we're in the middle of that. Um, the other alternative with, or the other point I want to make with the density is that, and I tried to make this a neighborhood meeting was that no, not everybody's looking for a smaller lot. There is a strong part of the sector of home buyers that are looking for smaller lots. And those aren't necessarily well represented or available in Chaska. And these are not, you know, we are using this as a control to put these homes in at five fifty to six fifty that fits in the demographics of what's there now. And keep in mind too, we're, you know, there were a lot of letters that were created and we appreciate the work and uh, that everybody put into sharing their, their concerns with us. But we're not asking that they give up their privacy, their backyard, their setbacks, their houses, whatever. They're going to enjoy those like they always have. Um, and, and the folks that are buying these, these places, if, again, I'm assuming it's proved, but um, they are young professionals. They are your teachers in the community. They're, they're, they're your neighbors. You know, they're, they're all walks of life. They just don't want the, the maintenance that goes along with a, a bigger lot. It also provides a place where somebody can live in the same neighborhood their entire lifetime, or most of it. So they can buy a starter, they can move to a bigger house as their family grows and then as they become empty nesters, there's alternatives there that they don't have to move out to the outskirts or some other place, maybe more urban, that's smaller. It's still a great neighborhood. Um, they can still live in the same place. As far as the comment about completely different development, I tried to explain the zoning that's set up here and probably didn't do a very good job. Um, what was being quoted from the, the neighbors was the PRD ordinance that was written for their development. And the question came, what's the zoning for yours? What's the zoning for yours? Just say it. Say what your, what are your setbacks requirements? And we don't really have any that are associated with our piece of property. It's currently open space or, or zoned open. That requires that anything that really gets done with that, it has to be rezoned. Now, the, the, the obvious receiving zone would be a PRD. And that is determined in the PRD process, what are the setbacks for the side yard setbacks, for the backyard setbacks. Um, and those are all written into the approval of that, that property. Um, another, this is kind of another kudos for your staff, but, uh, one of the key things that came up during the course review is, uh, is that they coordinated with MNDOT, and, um, in not many cases do we get, and, and let me start with, we aren't going to have any case here where they have an access to forty-one. And frankly, uh, they have their master plan. They, MNDOT has their master plan and where their intersections are and how traffic flows, and that's, that's their bag. And they don't want an access, even a write-in. They, we, they tried to consider it a write-in only there, just to take some of the pressure off, and they just wouldn't consider, consider it. So, now I lost my point. I'm sorry. I lost my point. I'm sorry. It happens. I'm fifty-five. Um, so yeah, we, this is a careful balance of what, what's there and what we're proposing. And, um, you know, I will give you an example of the, and I, Mr. Chair, I, I do happen to, uh, having been at probably over a thousand of these meetings in my life, in my adult life, um, the ghost plating rarely ever works out well. And I'll give you an example. We were asked to do a ghost plat on this, and we just basically extended our type of lots into that with very little thought. We don't own it. Um, and the reality is, I think there's twelve, there are twelve shown on that plan now? The reality is, number one, first step that somebody would have to go and do is stormwater design. And they would lose three lots there automatically. With that current layout, that'd be three less. Now, if the lots get bigger, there's less than that. And we don't spend a lot of design time. We're basically looking at the big, the big picture and saying, is it accessible so we're not creating an island? Um, oh, I'm sorry, another key point that this does is that in the master plan with, with forty-one, um, you know, MNDOT's very, very clear too, is that they want those driveways off of that, that highway, period. Anything that's done, they want them off of that. Uh, and this does that as well. So, um, but yeah, we're looking at those big picture items. And we extended our lots through that lot, that, that property to show we do have access. This does work. But so many other things need to be done to, to make that work. So, so I'm, yeah, I'm here for questions if you have any, and I appreciate your time.
If, so just hold on a sec. Questions for that looking in?
Maybe a clarification. I don't know if it's you or the staff, but the front yard, it says twenty, twenty feet. But I assume that's to the property line, and then there's right, so how much actual space is there from the curb line to the house?
There's usually about nine feet between the property line and the curb. So you have twenty feet from the property line to the face of the garage. And that's another point is that, you know, there's, there's a pretty, uh, clear, uh, architectural facade requirement here that applies here. Um, and then I think there's six of the lots that qualify because of the way they're positioned with forty-one on one side and the new road on the other, that they'd be what they call three sixty facade. So the, you know, the increased trim, um, the improvements that you would normally see on the fronts facing the street have to be all the way around the house on those six lots. And those are the ones that sit between those two.
I think I'd heard, maybe I misheard, that you're open to moving some front setbacks or moving the house a little bit to match a little more of the character of the neighborhood?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, on that, what we did, and, and I, this is gonna go with an apology because the delay last month was my fault. I was stuck in Atlanta with weather and could not physically get here. So they did the, the only reasonable thing is flew us to Florida to fly home, which got us here after ten o'clock. The answer is yes. Um, and that can be done a, a couple of ways. The cleanest way is we've got lots that are deeper than the minimum. They, they vary quite a bit. And where they do vary and get deeper, we're, we're willing to push those away from the, the road further. And that can be, um, recorded in the PRD zoning. So if it were a standard plat, and the reason I bring this up, if it was a standard plat, you have setbacks that apply, and that's what it is in your final plat. And something like this, we can actually record wider setbacks on certain areas. And those do, uh, they are restricted. So that's how we would do a fifty-foot side yard, uh, separation between the first house in the south. We could increase the setbacks going into Jasper as well as around the corner. But then as soon as we're in between forty-one and that new road, they're down to minimum, and then we can extend it again around the other curb.
Um, the south, the south side, where you have, the, you said fifty foot?
Fifty foot, yeah.
So now are you gonna, are you gonna have, it doesn't show it as an outlot. Is it just gonna be a larger lot for that landowner and the house is just skewed over?
Yes, with the building restriction on that lot. So it'll be a bigger lot, bigger width. And then there'll be a further setback, and that'll be recorded in the PRD.
That's what you're planning now, I saw on the plan, so?
Yes. And we're gonna have that landscaping in those transition areas as well, on both the north and the south side to help just soften that transition or whatever.
I have two questions. Um, how many developments have you done in Chaska?
We've personally two.
Which ones?
Um, actually, they got runway, but they never got developed. So.
Oh.
Well, zero, yeah. And they got sold, and I don't know what the name of them.
The reason why I'm trying to get this is the understanding of, is the, leads into the next question, which is the, now that you've gone through the, the, the neighborhood meeting and heard the feedback and the concerns with what you've presented, what are you going to do differently going forward? Um, I, just so everybody knows, I was sitting in your seats about seven years ago. And the developer came in, big plans, community came through, developer and neighbors came to discussions and open discussions to find out what fit in the community because they live here, you're wanting to put something here. How do you make it work? So what I want to know is, what are you gonna take from what you've heard and make the adjustments and changes going forward into, uh, the preliminary plan?
Well, the, the long answer to your short question, the, um, we did go to a neighborhood meeting. We did note everything that was said there, and we did make plan changes. Um, that's part of your process. And we did, uh, eliminate a lot. We increased setbacks and we increased landscaping. Um, so we feel we have made those changes to address a lot of those concerns. Is everybody gonna be happy here? No. But the developer wasn't happy either. There's a compromise that has to happen. Um, so what we're looking at, at, from this, is we, we are looking for an approval on a concept. Okay? Um, there are, uh, like planning said, there are two other critical steps here and, and that a preliminary plat and a final plat need to come forward and be submitted and reviewed with public hearings. There's an opportunity there that we can, uh, we can work closer toward what the neighbors are looking for. But at the same time, we have been through this, and it's, you know, the two that I worked on and got designed and got sold, got built, I just don't know what the name of them are because I wasn't final plating it. So, um, it's not like I haven't done anything here. But, um, I believe we have heard the neighbors, you know, and with the exception of only build this many, uh, we do look for solutions that work for everybody. So, yeah, we're, we're requesting that we get a recommendation to move forward. And, um, you know, if that, you know, I don't know the short answer to that one.
No, and I, I guess my expectation is, is the, the continued dialogue and an openness for hearing and applying those changes, not just what is within the structure. Because like I said, it's a concept plan. It's, it, it, it checks the boxes. There's nothing outside of it, but there's a lot of concern. And, and that's the part where the process needs to work through those concerns to be able to find the balance. Because, yes, what you've presented checks the box for a concept plan. But it also creates a lot of concerns with the neighbors that this is a buddy because it's completing their neighborhood. It's completing their neighborhood. There's nothing else besides to the north. There's nothing else left except for this little piece in that neighborhood. And that piece is gonna be another forty years forever. So like you said, this is a critical part for the neighbors now as well as in the future as well.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate those comments, and we're not stopping communication. It really doesn't stop, um, until the process is done. Um, you know, the developer's not opposed to working with and trying to come up with the best solutions for not only the folks that, I mean, we, we tried to hear who was directly affected to this most, which were the neighbors that are closest to it. Um, uh, you know, by, by increasing setbacks and, and increasing the landscaping and, and such. To, to say that we're gonna get to a point that the overwhelming comment is just build what we have, unfortunately, is impossible in this, in this case. Um, we can't build what they have and be at even close to eight hundred, eight or nine hundred thousand dollars. And that doesn't fit here. We're trying to have that balance between what they have, where their homes' values are, not too much higher, not lower, but it fits in such a way that it, it isn't to be transferred. These are the same types of families that they see there now. So while there's compromises, that step may be outside the, the hoop, I guess.
So you use the size of the lot as the justification for the price of a home you put on it?
We aren't, hang on, building, I'm, I'm sorry. We're just having a one-on-one here, but I, I appreciate that. I do.
Because you say it's like, you know, it's like you've got to make a smaller lot to be able to fit a, a value of a house onto that lot, even though those two are not mutually exclusive. Though you can have a bigger lot with the same size house. And yes, the value may be higher, but you're also getting the land with it as well too. So I think that's the part where it's like a misconception of saying, just because it's a big lot, you gotta put a bigger house. You don't necessarily have to do that because the neighbors are living in that right now. They're living in the twenty-one to three thousand square foot homes with a larger lot. So that's the part where I, I always have.
Yeah, I, so, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I made my point.
I think that, so certainly, three, three decades later, the economics are different. And so I do agree the lot size and the houses aren't mutually, they're not, they're not exclusive to each other. You could do a smaller house, like neighborhood, on a bigger lot. Um, but I mean, economically, I, I don't, you know, that's not typically what you would see. And on the opposite side, if you go down to eight lots, then you're gonna have something out of character with the neighborhood as well. You're gonna have million-dollar homes, a little pocket of like these super nice homes, you know? So there's a really fine line. I mean, it's definitely not townhomes. Well, even with the, with the comp plan, I mean, I think you probably might build a fit townhomes in there on a, you know, you're at three, where are you at, three-point, your density?
We were at one point in the first time, but then we walked the neighborhood.
All right. And so I mean, like, just want to point out, like, that would be the opposite end of the scale. That wouldn't fit at all. Um, and so, um, I do understand the neighbors' concerns, and I think we should try to address it if we can. Um, but, um, you know, so putting eight houses of half a million dollars on, on large lots just isn't nineteen ninety-seven right now. Like, you know, that doesn't, you know, and so you get this landlocked piece of land that's unable to do anything with. I mean, I think it's, I think it's reasonable. We're, I think we're with, in my personal opinion, we're, we're, we're within reason. I think we need to try to figure out in our, with the commission here, how do we get it a little more, how do we get a little more compromise? You know, what's, what can we do to try to appease some of the concerns? And outside of the density, setting aside, I just want to understand, put on record, concerns about travel, traffic, safety, MNDOT, we're, we're not gonna get an access off of, from MNDOT on forty-one. So unfortunately, that's not gonna happen. I understand there's only one in and out of the neighborhood. Um, I live in a neighborhood with one in and out. You know, it's not ideal. Um, I don't think we're gonna get a new road connecting somewhere through someone's private property. So it's unfortunately, that's just the way the traffic is. It's gonna be what it is. You know, the argument to me, if you had sixteen houses versus twelve, and that four-house difference also makes all the traffic better. Like, I don't think that's the extra, you know, four homes with two cars and a house is gonna drastically change the safety of the traffic. I mean, more or less, that's kind of set, um, by what we already have existing. So setting aside those, those things, I just wanted to address publicly into the crowd that, you know, we're not gonna get an access on MNDOT, unfortunately. Probably not gonna get a second access. It's not part of this development outside your neighborhood. That would be, I don't even know how you'd address that with the city and if some other future date, if there's some other connection in the future that can happen um, for a secondary access. That's outside of this tonight that we're looking at. Um, and, um, let me see here. Setbacks, I do think it would be great if you could figure out some front setbacks to match the neighborhood. You can do it on, on the sides. There is concern though with me that even doing that then will, will make it look irregular, more irregular because you're gonna have some houses closer, some, some further, some closer within this tight little extension of development. So I, I'm not sure. I'd like to hear from, press the commission on if you think, you know, uniform within this development, whether or not sixteen houses are not, or if you should try to juggle the setbacks, you know, on some of them and some of you can't. Does that even look more out of place? Um.
You've heard me before on consistency.
Yeah.
And, and I, I, just even before this one, it's like, you're going from one to the next. I mean, you go around the loop and you're gonna get three different developments. And so.
What I was saying, just within this development, lots three through nine are kind of bound by forty-one.
Right.
But so we can put the other ones.
But we're talking both side and front as well too. So making, because right now they've got five-foot side, side setbacks.
Right.
It's the, why is it five? Because it's a, they get to create the rules, but they're abutting to a neighborhood that is already set at, you know, the ten-foot or whatever it is. So this is the part where it's like, you, you should be able to use the transition from one to the next and use that as the litmus of what the setback should be. Because they're not constrained by forty-one. They're not constrained by, you know, steeple, you know.
The, the ones on that at Drake, like the ones that are closer to the, to.
All of them. The, the whole, because it's just a constant loop. There's no difference as you go from north to south. You know, the setbacks should be in line with what Jasper North and South are and what the PRD set for below two.
What if you, what if you change the sightline, you know, like on the south side of Jasper? This, that's a pretty straight road, right? No curves or anything until you get to the circle. And I see at the start of the circle, kind of looked like it makes a little jog. So if you're on Jasper's south side, you don't see all of the setbacks, like if you're at the beginning of Jasper Circle. So it, it's, to that point is, we've got one, you know, very distinct old established neighborhood. There's a new neighborhood going in there with a big retention pond. We already said it's there to kind of separate the backyards a little bit. But then Jasper, it seemed on the new, we've already known there's gonna be the connecting, you know, between north and south. It jogs around a little bit, so it changes that sightline for those neighbors, you know? So you're not seeing the whole setback, you know, on every house around that circle. So I.
Right.
My thing is, is, you know, it's, you know, you're not, it's not, like you're looking down three, three, you know, miles of a straight road.
It's been, I mean, it'd be different if this neighborhood was in the beginning of the neighborhood, and you gotta drive through it to get to the rest of the neighborhood. It's kind of off on its own. So I mean, it's, it's inconsistent still, but it's not as if it's an eyesore at the beginning of the neighborhood that like you, you, you drive through and causes you to just, no disparity right off the bat. Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, that, you know, there's no sidewalks in the neighborhood from what I saw. So, you know, people, you know, are, okay.
Not on Jasper, but on, uh.
On.
Yeah, in, in, but we're talking about the Jasper area, right? So there's none there. So safety concerns, you know, the, the sidewalk is over there. That's fine. I, I get it. The neighborhood, you know, I grew up running around the street and playing in the street and walking in the street, walking the dogs in the street. running around the street and playing in the street and walking in the street, walking the dogs in the street, but it's, you know, like I said, you don't have a straight sightline and it is changing as you go around that circle.
Sure. This is just one of those unique, and this led into that comment a little bit, but it's one of those unique issues where we aren't doing it at the entrance. It is the extended end of the development. It's the last phase, like you will. None of these people will ever have to drive through it if they don't want to. If it's that ugly, if it's that unappealing, if it's that whatever it is, they don't have to walk their dog that way. We certainly hope they do, you know. But again, I'm not saying or throwing out the idea that we compromise if if consistency along the setbacks is more important than the separation to the first existing home. Let's move things around, you know. So yeah, the communication has to continue. I agree. But we have to find out what those most important things are. When we had the neighborhood meeting, it was to those people that are immediately adjacent to the new development that it was loud and clear that the most important thing is move those as far away from us as possible. So we did. And doing that eliminated a lot, but we did.
Wow.
So.
Well, I so me personally, I don't I don't feel comfortable just ambiguously picking a number and saying that that's just solved. Whether it's ten lots or twelve lots, fourteen or eight, I mean, because you can make an argument either way all the way down the line, right? Could be just one, one big house there. I mean, I you know, so all of a sudden twelve lots just solves the problem like ours and four less families. I think, I mean, it's a little more dense, falls within the parameters. Do want to address the neighborhood's concerns if there's something there and I don't know if there's a way we can do that, but I mean, it, I I understand it. Like I lived in Dover Ridge and, you know, there's mixed use townhomes right next to me down the road. Like it didn't bother me. I mean, you know, we're not putting townhomes here. But I do get when something comes in, it's different than what you thought, which is why I don't like those ghost plats. I mean, I just, it's not great. I honestly don't think we should do it going forward either, but that's another discussion. So I guess that's, I mean, that's kind of my opinion. I think we should do more on the south side than what's shown on the application or what's shown in the packet here. And whether that means you lose one more lot and you have to like reposition them a little bit and maybe increase some setbacks on the side. So, you know, maybe that's what has to happen, but I don't think I I personally don't feel comfortable, especially when it falls within the parameters and he's on the low end of the density that's allowed per the comp plan to just am ambiguously pick a number and say, hey, it's twelve lots. Like that's just a magic number. You know, it doesn't seem like that fits either, but I do think there should be a little more, something should be addressed to try to fit it to the character of the neighborhood a little better.
I would agree. I just, I think sixteen units is too much.
Yeah.
Knowing that size of that development, that drive by it every day.
Yeah.
I just think it's too many houses in that small of area.
And so I think we gotta be careful.
But I don't think it's our right to just pick, okay, you can only have eight.
Yeah, arbitrarily pick something, right? So and at the same time, if we did, we said, okay, you know what? But we're gonna make you do ten. Then we're gonna ten million dollar homes there. And maybe the property owners would be happy with that because of the basis their value received or something, but it's still would be out of character. So there is a, I mean, we wanted to make, if we, if we want to match, right? That's the whole argument we've kind of heard in the crowd tonight. We want it to match. So ten home, ten million dollar homes does not match.
Said, okay.
We want it to be.
Stop with the million dollar.
Well, that's probably what it's going to be.
But it's it's back to the part where I will agree the fact that we can't set the number. But what we can say is set the direction and the direction is something smaller than what it is right now. And something that's more cohesive to the neighborhood that they're in. That's a because because at the end of the day, it's a concept plan.
Don't feel comfortable just picking a number.
Right. And likewise, I can't pick a number, nobody but
Shouldn't have to.
But they can work to some kind of I'll say agreement resolution, but it has to be together to be able to actually come to it. And it starts with the developer's willingness to actually change their plan.
So what we need to think about is how we we can have a discussion and I don't want to make you stand there forever. Do we have any more questions for that? Okay, how do we amongst ourselves, the discussion is what, you know, how do we craft that language into the conditions, right? Like that's what we got to think about then is how, what do we what do we want to do to try to address some concerns and make sure that it, when it comes back here for preliminary plat? Because as we know, yeah, there's a three step process, but what we do tonight sets the tone going forward, right? And so because there's a lot of work. My title comes back to promote, promote. There's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, a lot of money spent, a lot of sexual. I mean, it's, you're down the path at that point. So.
I don't know why I can't grasp why, why the bigger lot, the bigger home. I I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time with that because I purchased where I live, not for the home, I purchased it for the lot. I chose the smaller home. I paid more for my lot.
People want to pay more for their lot.
Do you know what I'm saying? There are people out there that want a bigger lot. To me, I I drive around the city and I'm, I I've been born and raised here, right? And and then the new developments that are going in, I just look at it and I just cringe.
Because they're on top of each other.
They're on top of each other. You open up your window and you're like, hey, neighbor.
Everywhere in the twin city, that is.
Right? I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time saying why, why can't we have a bigger lot in a smaller home? And still stay within the price range. I'm, I'm struggling with that.
Well, and and I'm not, I'm not trying to like advocate his behalf. I'm just saying like, that just isn't what the market is, you know what I mean? Generally, generally speaking.
So I think.
I we see so many developments the way that they are. People want small lots, big house, as big as they can and get a small lot.
But not everybody.
Not everybody. I know, I agree, but majority.
I'm not trying to sell three hundred homes like that.
No, I know. But I'm just saying that's why you're cringing. You go around and see it because that's what's happening. And I agree.
I'm just, we're trying to sell maybe ten homes like that or twelve homes like that. We're not trying to sell a a complete development of three hundred homes like that.
Yep.
I mean, there's going to be buyers for that situation.
Sure. Yep. I I don't disagree with that. I just, again, I our position, so I think our position here, I'm in favor of trying to figure out these concerns.
Right.
I don't think I can arbitrarily pick a number and nor do, I think we gotta be careful that, you know, what we see is within the parameters. So like for us, just arbitrarily say, no, I think we, but there is value or there is opportunity here that we can try to find a little more compromise.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Josh Rizberg, I work for Gavnet Properties. Mr. Pierce is my boss who owns Gavnet Properties. I just wanted to let the neighborhood know that Mr. Pierce is not a developer. I mean, this is something that's new. It's our first development. How we got into this was he has two kids that he's looking at building and they're looking at buying in this neighborhood or or they're going to live in this neighborhood. That's how this all sort of came about. And I want to, excuse me. I want to answer your question, Commissioner. Is the the increased price with the lot, the larger you make that lot, what we're fighting currently right now is our developing cost. So getting our developers out there to develop the lot, every time we make that lot bigger, we have to increase the price on that lot, which will increase the price on the house. I don't know if you guys know what jumbo loans were at pre-COVID? Do you guys know what they were at? A jump loan through bank for mortgage, they're at four hundred and nineteen, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Currently, they're at eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the jumbo loan, if you don't know what that is, it actually puts high risk. It's a high risk loan and that's why they drive the interest rate higher. What we are trying to do in developing this property is keep those prices down so we can get first time home buyers or second time home buyers to move into this neighborhood. We understand, I understand, just like you guys, I come from property that I sold two years ago because it got approved through the city of Chicago, even prior to Lake. I got ANX long started short. Somebody built three feet off the property line. It got approved. I didn't like it and I, I have no clue why they approved it. And so I ended up moving because of it. So I understand everybody's concerns right now. I live in Rosemont now. They're building five foot setbacks all over there. Am I saying that this is right? I don't think, you know, I'm not saying that this is right. But I'd like to answer the questions to help you guys understand why we're getting to this, you know, this lot size. And it's because of the, it keeps driving the price of us developing it on that part of it. So the sound barrier, the landscaping, all that stuff. I I don't think sometimes people understand what the, I just got a estimate for trees just to put it back in at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I mean, does that sound, I don't know if, those are very large numbers. So I, I would like to, you guys can hopefully consider understanding that making these lots smaller is one of the only ways we can develop this land and keep it affordable for the people buying. I do understand, I I'm willing to answer any of the neighborhood questions. Sit down with people and talk with them. Like I said, I represent the company. People that go in and out of there, they're going to, currently right now at Jasper North and South, they leave out of there. I don't see people driving through there. I do understand the change and we're trying to work with the buffer line to make things flow consistently with the same size, but at the same time, we can't make it look exactly like the existing neighborhood from, from how old it is. Do you guys have any, any neighborhoods currently in Chaska right now that have five foot setbacks anywhere?
On the side? On the side, yeah.
On the north.
They do. And I guess, Commissioner Olson, is the, I know you keep going back to the house and the more expensive and what we're trying to do is stay out of that jumbo loan. You know, you start getting up there and that's where things are. I can't afford an eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar house. You know, I live in a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house that I have a mortgage on that I'm paying for thirty years.
Yeah.
So it, for me, it's that, that's what we're trying to make work is the developing costs with the size of the lot. So we're trying to, I I understand we're not going to make everybody happy and we're going to try and do the best we can. I've had some conversations with neighbors about replacing their whole drive off if we need to. Mr. Pierce is willing to do that. But we are trying to bounce, the margins on this project are not large. And as I mentioned, this is, we're not developers making a bunch of money off of this. The buildings, our margins are not large. Our developing margins are going to be very little by the time we're done with this, with the cost that we're getting back to develop this land at sixteen lots. So we're trying to make all that combined work together so we can build affordable homes. We are in a home crisis, correct? You know, it's a, it's, it's an interesting time right now. I'll be honest, I've been in the building industry since two thousand and two. So if you guys have any questions, I'd like to try and help you guys under Sam. But Commissioner, it's, that's the problem we're, we're fighting right now is the developing costs. As, as the developers going in, we got all the utilities, the stormwater and everything else, that's going to drive the house to a more expensive price if we have a larger lot on there.
Your name again?
My name's Josh.
Josh.
I asked, what, what other que-
Did you approach the property owner to the north to try and do one development to complete this whole area?
I'm sorry, to the north, that's with the the ghost plant with twelve? I believe it was asked, Jim had approached them to ask, yes, if they were interested in it.
And they weren't.
And they weren't interested, yeah, in selling that. That would have helped with having the developer there at one time to develop that land to sort of keep costs down because we could do it all at once. But they weren't willing to sell.
To at least like, what about the HOA part? Like, are you planning to be part of the current HOA setup or like it's a different like? Are you planning to have a different one? Because if it is part of the same HOA thing, so they have to be I mean, be with the existing neighbors, right? So do you have anything in that? Or it's too early, I mean, regarding the HOA decision?
In the plan for what? I'm sorry.
They're in HOA.
HOA.
You're gonna, HOA, no, there was not going to be an HOA through there, no.
Is there an existing HOA in the other neighborhood? No. Yeah, it's a first. It's not Jonathan? Amazing. See, it's all right. I I feel like, you know, either way you go, it becomes a little bit problematic. I, I also don't want to create a neighborhood that's like, we put these stipulations on it where it's like, they're just off their side. It's not very nearly either. Or it's like, oh, I want these buffers and they gotta be over here. Like, well, that's just because they're a little more dense, you know? I mean, that feels wrong too. So like, then you don't have that flow of the whole neighborhood feelings. So.
And that's again, you know, to
Yeah.
Together through this process.
Right. And it kind of comes back to opposite side where I don't, you know, I don't feel comfortable to say, well, they need to build eight, you know? So it's like, what do we? Do we have any thoughts? I mean, I, I, I personally think if we can, there seems to be a good buffer with the, with the storm pond and then there's an outlot in the right away. But then the buffer in the south side is, is quite small compared to that. It's part of someone's lot. I would prefer me suddenly, and you don't have to, you don't have to agree to me with me, but maybe some sort of outlot on the south side as well, and maybe it becomes, I don't know, a little play area or like a book sharing something or like.
Who's going to maintain it though?
Well, I, yeah, I don't know.
Idea, but maintaining it is the difference, especially.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I don't have all the details, but you know, that's for them to figure out. I mean, I don't know. But if you had an outlot there, if the neighborhood wants a buffer, then you know, then you have like the, the lots. You know, maybe you wind up losing a lot. I'm not, I'm not sure. You have to reevaluate. You can get some bigger, you know, better setbacks.
You haven't heard anything about buffer. So I mean, none of the comments were about buffer. That was addressed in, you know, after the, the neighborhood meeting.
Yeah, and I see that they put something in here on, you know, three.
So now it's, I mean, it's more on just the sure number of them. So and back to our point, we can't necessarily say what that number is, but we can say work together and come back with a better plan at preliminary and that's.
Yeah, I.
Chair, Commissioner, so just kind of, sorry to interrupt, but listening to the discussion, I'm hearing a lot from the planning commission, the desire that, you know, the developer worked with the neighborhood here and continue with that. You know, it sounds like, you know, obviously the neighborhood is asking for fewer lots. And there's a whole, you know, I would tend to agree with the direction the commission is going and I would, if you're asking me for a recommendation, getting into the detail around how many lots to lose or whether lots should be lost for that matter, I think is a tough directive to give. But I do think what we have seen work in similar situations in the past, if you back to Autumn Woods and Wagner Farm, if y'all remember that one. We did convene source, a few representatives from the neighborhood, two or three, you know, to work with the developer, help them kind of weigh in as they're working through their, their plans at the preliminary stage. And we found that to be successful dialogue. So I don't know if that necessarily needs to be conditioned, but it could be, you know, just direction to staff that we would coordinate those conversations going forward. That's something that we're happy to do. We've done before. And I think we've seen some success with that. I mean, it sounds to me, you know, some things like, you know, transitioning from the existing neighborhood into the new, having consistency there, looking at setbacks, looking at number of lots, looking at, you know, how you buffer things, landscaping, birmingham, you know, those are all things that are on the table, I think, that can be explored, but it's, we're not going to get to final solutions at this point in this discussion tonight on that. And nor is that the, the objective, right? This is a concept plan. So we're trying to give some direction. I've heard a lot of direction already. And I think, you know, there's, we do have some conditions that get to you know, the idea of, of, you know, buffering between the two developments. But if if you're seeing things that, you know, you may want to bolster within those, you know, I think, I think that's absolutely appropriate. But if you're feeling like that's, you know, what's here is giving the direction already, I think maybe then that direction to staff to you know, coordinate that kind of dialogue with the neighborhood, maybe beneficial to this process as well. Um, you know, coordinate that kinda dialogue with the neighborhood, maybe beneficial to this process as well.
I think they were closed.
It's not just the Jasper North and South.
I would ask you to approach, please come on.
My name is Tim Dames and I live at eighteen sixty-nine White Oak Drive. So if any of y'all been in the neighborhood, my lot is right next to the walking trail with the orange chairs. And the big fireplace. But it's not just Jasper North and South that you should be concerned with. You got homes up on White Oak that go up to Southwest Christian, you got homes on Grove. You got homes that come from the other directions as you're going out, White Oak, that merge in. There's the density and the traffic. And unless you've been in the neighborhood. In the morning, in the afternoon, you don't have. I mean, a feel of the frustration getting out of there. The roundabouts. I'm sorry, if you've been down by the golf zone, going towards Shakopee at five o'clock or eight in the morning. That is a major accident waiting to happen. But. A lot of the traffic just doesn't come off of area, it's coming from Oconia. Oconia comes in to get on to two twelve. So. It's not fair to just look at the extension of. Jasper North and South. Sixteen houses, in my opinion, is way too many houses. I get that, the dollars and cents, but. There has to be a consensus that somehow you reduce the number of cars. I mean, the traffic one way in and out. It's. I don't care if you have a roundabout or not. Because they're gonna shut down three months, and I'm still trying to figure out how we're gonna get out of there. And. As, I didn't go to the roundabout meeting. But the neighbors did. And what they expressed to me, they did not, the people in charge of the roundabouts did not know about this development coming in. Until the afternoon before the meeting. Now, whether he understood that correctly or not, I'm taking his word. But. Um, and I don't know when this development is planning to start. But, you know, it's, it's a lot of cars, it's a lot of in and out. Um, and, I mean, it's. I just hope the commission. Listens to the, the people that live in the neighborhood, actually, that live it every day, go in and out.
I think we're listening. Something, but.
I.
Ask you, since you're here, and then I'm gonna, please ask that, we'll finish this up now, since we already closed. In your opinion, I just, since you're here, Pummy Homes works for you.
Somewhere close to what was described when I bought there in two thousand and one. I mean. Doesn't need to be just eight, but. I mean, a compromise is from seventeen, which was proposed at the meeting to sixteen, that's no compromise. I mean, get somewhere close to the ghost plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so. I think we should figure out how we wanna word this at a condition and move forward to the next app, next thing on the item, on the agenda.
A recommendation of adjusting the site setbacks from five feet to ten feet. Cause I think by doing that, well, at least, because, like you said, it's like, we're kind of setting the boundaries for the rest of. You know, for the future side.
Yeah.
And by doing that, will. Put the emphasis on the developer to.
So I'm, I'm down the path here with this, I knew, so I would like, me personally, I would like to have it be an option, and I think then. The, the option between two things, so either we increase side setback by a nominal amount. Which gives it more character to fit into the neighborhood. Or. We can create a larger buffer on the south side, so then this little neighborhood becomes. Little more detached from the rest of the neighbors, if they're concerned about it, and the developer can work with the neighborhood. And choose which path they wanna go down. Do they wanna look at increasing side setbacks a little bit? Or they wanna look at creating a larger buffer on the south side, maybe there's like a. Desk ball hoop or, I don't know, something, piece of land, something that buffers it out. Um, they can determine which, which way, working with the neighborhood. What's more receptive and, you know, what works better.
I think that one, I mean, I think it works.
Cause they, they can choose, do they wanna buffer, they wanna buffer the neighborhood out, or do they wanna like?
Can't say, it's like, what's, what's the answer?
Yeah, I don't know what the answer is. They need to work with them and they can choose this way or that way, cause I don't want, it has to be this setback. I mean, maybe, maybe they wanna say, hey, we'll take a larger buffer. Right, you know, and put that off to decide.
I, cause I'll, I'll go with this one. If it comes back at sixteen again, it, it's gonna be an easy no.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
I mean, without even, I mean, I would say, don't even think about presenting something that's sixteen, because I will say no. And, but that's, and I'm not, exactly, I'm not saying what that number, I'm not saying what that number is, but something less than here, it's gonna be something, but. They'll work on it, so.
Yeah.
I, I think with that one, I will make a, a motion.
It would be condition number. Uh, we're at nine conditions, I think, I gotta get my computer fired back up here.
Uh, I think seven.
Would be condition number.
It would be eight.
Condition number eight, cause we took out two. Took out two, but three changed a little bit.
You could just say that it's a, as an.
As an additional condition, developers should work with neighborhood representatives, maybe they assign a couple. So he doesn't get attacked by the mob, you know? That either setbacks. Side setbacks be increased or.
Buffer.
A larger buffer on the south side. Cause there's a pretty good buffer in the middle and the north. In the, in their street, in the right, in the outlot. Would anyone be able. Approving a condition, would, would anyone look to make a motion with that, with that extra condition?
I will, so I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the city council, approve the concept plan for Jasper Circle of sixteen lot subdivision. Subject to the following. Uh, maybe six conditions that were listed and the additional condition that we just discussed.
Yeah, with either increased setbacks, side setbacks.
Backs or.
Second. All those in favor? Post. Motion carries. Thank you. What was it? Sure.
Thank you, sure. Um, should we work with, through staff to establish who those representatives are?
Yeah, yeah, but they can maybe talk to the city or to the residents or somehow. Guys can figure it out. Appreciate everyone's time, your feedback. Oh geez, that was pretty much everybody. Alright. Liz, are you doing this one?
I'll be doing this one.
Okay. Liz, can you, uh? Go ahead and cover us or present to us seven seats?
Yes. Ice cream?
Yeah.
Yes. Members of the planning commission, uh, this evening, we have a preliminary site and building plan and rezoning request this evening. For Hazelton National Golf Course, uh, known as their northwest side of their site. Um, this is a proposal coming forward to you this evening from Hazelton National Golf Club. Uh, so the site in question is generally highlighted in, uh, the orange outline. Um, again, it encompasses the northwest area of the golf courses site. Uh, so abutments are Huntermark Road on the west side, Hazelton Boulevard on the north side. Uh, there's surrounding, uh, residential both in, um, Hazelton Plaza Apartments that are in Hazelton Plaza. So there's additional commercial in that area. We have the Loop, uh, Golf Course, which is a city-owned, uh, golf course. Um, additional residential to the north, Hazelton Shore Apartments. Carver's Green Town Homes and then Hazelton Estates and then some, uh, detached single family on Birdie Lane. Um, so where we're at in the three-step review process, uh, we're right in the middle at the preliminary site and building plan and, uh, rezoning. Uh, so we're at more of the technical review side of things, um, review of the civil drawings and looking at, um, analyses. Um, uh, for certain ordinances. Uh, so to give you a background and a snapshot of some previous approvals, um, on the site. Uh, the applicant and property owner, uh, did conduct a neighborhood meeting back in February, February of this year. Um, and this was to, uh, address the requirement, uh, before their concept plan. Um, they did, uh, receive a number of comments during that time, which are listed on this slide here. Um. Pertaining to a number of things, traffic, uh, pedestrian connections, um, ingress and egress, tree preservation, construction traffic. Um, status of the new villas, uh, timing, et cetera. Uh, the concept plan that came before you, uh, was just, uh, in, uh, March of this year. Uh, the concept plan drawing is shown on this slide here, uh, just to give you a snippet of what was, uh, proposed during that time. Um, a couple of the key discussion points that came out of that concept plan review pertain to, uh, looking at the parking analysis and. Uh, the loss of parking, um, with this area now being proposed for, uh, development of villas and a new short course. Um, looking at the traffic evaluation of the new, uh, main entrance. Uh, relocation to the east side of Hazelton Boulevard and how that interacted with the intersection there. Um, also, uh, a comment on, uh, the alignment of the west service road on Huntermark Road. And its alignment with Hazelton Plaza to the west. Um, and then also, uh, addressing, uh, a sidewalk provision on the south side of Hazelton Boulevard. Um, and addressing a future connection opportunity on the east side of Huntermark Road. Uh, s- the existing conditions of this site, uh, the overall acreage of the Hazelton, uh, Golf. Horse site, uh, is approximately three hundred and thirty-five acres total. However, we're honing into about thirteen acres on the northwest side, uh, that encompasses this proposal. Um, there are trees along the north edge of the site that abut Hazelton Boulevard. Um, there is access currently on Hazelton Boulevard for their main entrance. Um, as well as a couple service entries, um, sprinkled, uh, in there as well. Uh, the parking on site totals approximately two hundred and four stalls. Uh, they also have a clubhouse on site that totals approximately fifty thousand square feet. Um, and then there are no trails or sidewalks that exist. On the, uh, east side of Huntermark Road along Hazelton Boulevard and along Huntermark Road. Just a couple images of existing conditions out there, the top images, uh, look to kind of the northwest area of that. Agricultural field site and where most of their, um, overflow parking happens during their larger events. And then the images, uh, on the bottom here. Um. Focus in more on, uh, around the clubhouse site. So what's being requested this evening is a preliminary site and building plan. Uh, for the addition of eight one-story villas, uh, for onsite lodging. Um, they are also proposing a, a new putting course that'd be directly to the west of those villas. A new short course totaling ten holes on that northwest side of the site. And then also modifications to where the main vehicle entrance is located. Um, and, um, where they're proposing access points for service entries. Um, the request also includes a rezoning, uh, from the open district to planned multi-use district, uh, specifically PMD twenty-three. Um, so the preliminary plan is shown on this slide here. Um. Want to initially note, um, the access points onto Hazelton Boulevard. Um, the main vehicle access is circled in blue here, um, and this again is being realigned from where it currently sits. Which is right here to be at the end of Hazelton, uh, Boulevard on the east side. And this switch or relocation was, um. Intentional to provide easier access into the site, uh, for the, the golf club. Um, as well as provide easier, uh, egress for people exiting the site and getting onto Hazelton Boulevard. What they've stated is there's confusion around left-hand turns, um. And how that maneuvers through the median of Hazelton Boulevard, so this new relocation, uh, was to help ease. Uh, some of the confusion and, um. Challenges they, uh, have with the current location of the main entrance into the site. Uh, there's also two service entries on site, um, both on, uh. What's west of, uh, the main entrance, um, and then east of the main vehicle entrance. Both of these are gated entries, so they're really limited to, um, either, uh, people providing deliveries to the site. Um, or have larger truck traffic, um, providing deliveries to the site. These are only meant for, um, those employee entrances into and out of the site, so those are not member. Uh, entrance or exit points for the site. Um, in addition to the main entrance here, they will be adding a gatehouse, uh, to. Uh, the entrance point, so people entering the site will have to go through a secure entrance to be able to enter. Um, whoops, to be able to enter the golf course. Uh, for parking, um. Are, uh, proposing a total of three hundred and fifty-five stalls for the entire site on this side. Uh, of the golf course, um, two hundred and twenty-seven of those will be new stalls, so in addition. To the existing parking lot that's adjacent, um. To, uh, the clubhouse here. Um, so three hundred and fifty-five stalls are proposed, which over exceeds, uh, what is, uh, required for the site. Based on the clubhouse, the golf course and the villas, uh, that are proposed, um, and this is meant to provide for, um. Additional, uh, paved overflow parking for the site in the event that they have those larger events. Uh, the eight villas are on kind of, uh, directly west of the proposed. New parking lot, uh, of the site, and the, these will be, uh, scattered around, uh, what is known as the new putting course. Uh, here, highlighted in gray, and then also, um, the new short course, uh, that is spread out on the northwest side there. Um, these will be one-story walkout, uh, type structures. Um, I do wanna note that in the concept plan, they noted, uh, two-story structures, so that had, uh, to be one-story. Um, and the amount of them still stays the same at eight villas, um, they'll have four bedrooms in each villa, so a total of thirty-two bedrooms. Uh, for this proposal. Uh, like I mentioned, the putting course immediately. Like I mentioned, the putting course immediately to the west of the villas. So the intention there is that these villas would be able to have kind of that direct access onto that putting course. This area will be lit with 10-foot fixtures. Short course, which will be a 10-hole layout here. This will also be lit up with 35-foot light poles. Each of those proposals do meet the city's lighting ordinance in terms of height limitations, which is 35 feet. In addition, and what I'll show on a subsequent slide here, is they will be doing birmingham and landscaping on the north and west sides to help screen the golf course from the roadway, as well as adjacent residential to the north and to the west there. And then lastly, they do show two options of a sidewalk connection along Hazelton Boulevard, so both on the north and the south sides. And this one, they do have preference for the north side just due to privacy reasons, but are also showing feasibility of the south side too. As both options were reviewed and vetted out, and again, their preference was the north side, or is the north side. The grading plan is shown here, and what is proposed for Birmingham as well along the north and west sides. The metrics shown in red here are heights as they relate to the height of roadway adjacent. The west side will have ranging from 16 feet up to 18 feet approximately. And then on the north side, there will be a range of Birmingham ranging from four feet to eight feet, depending on where you're sitting along those roadways. The trees on the north side, a majority of those will be saved with this overall proposal as they provide a pretty mature buffer from Hazelton Boulevard. So most of those will be staying with this layout. This is their landscape plan. They are proposing 173 new trees, which is above and beyond what our ordinance requires just based on the new added square footage to the site. So they will be introducing a pretty hefty landscape plan to help supplement the Birmingham that they're doing on the north and west sides. These added trees will also help with screening to the residential on the north and west sides, both from the golf course side of things and from the parking lot. One of the items that we'll be requesting in the final is a couple of cross-sections of these different roadways, just to understand how the Birmingham and the landscaping relates to what is seen from the roadway in relation to the golf course and the proposed lighting. Just to fully understand kind of what that big picture is of the site. In terms of architecture and what's proposed with the villas and the gatehouse, the villas, the intention there is to match or be similar to the clubhouse building, which introduces or uses a mixture of stone, composite siding, glass, some wood elements as well. And so they are planning to mimic that design in the villas. Again, as you can see, these are slab-on-grade villas with a mixture of stone, composite siding, windows to match again the clubhouse design. And here are elevations of the gatehouse, so this would be at the main entrance off of Hazelton Boulevard. And just a couple of things to delve into that came out of the concept plan discussion, kind of where they're at with this preliminary design here. So we did ask them to do a parking analysis or provide a little bit more information on the level of parking that is lost as a result of developing the northwest side of the site, as they've indicated that this area is used during their large events for overflow parking. So with the proposal, they will be losing approximately 11 acres of space for overflow parking, which they are planning to replace on the southwest side of the site in a seven-acre corner, what is known as their pumpkin patch area of the site. So they are losing four acres of parking space with that replacement, which amounts to approximately 300 to 400 parking stalls that they will need to account for in their shuttling service. So they do do a hefty shuttling service during their large events like the Ryder Cup, and that's really when that comes into play or when this overflow parking is needed. So they see being able to account for that is a minimal metric for them to have to account for when the time comes for those larger events. And also, getting or moving to off-site shuttling will also help with some of the congestion that occurs with having onsite overflow parking where the event is occurring. So there is some benefit of being able to shift to more of a shuttle-based approach with the loss of those areas of parking. And then also looking at evaluating the new entrance with the other entrance points on Hazelton Boulevard. So from the city's standpoint and our review of the access points there, our policy looks to limit the amount of access points into and out of a site as much as possible from points of safety and ensuring that there aren't added conflicts of where traffic is coming into and out of the site and how it's interacting with other access points on the road. So there is an emphasis on trying to limit the amount of ingress and egress points into and out of a site. So with that, looking at the site plan shown, and with the location of the new main entrance here, it's in very close proximity to that service entry as well as adjacent to Birdie Lane. Staff's recommendation and advisement is to eliminate the service point entry here or somehow combine it into this main entry here, so there's really a funnel of those access points coming off into Hazelton Boulevard. So that is a condition of approval for the applicant to work on into their final. And then lastly, the sidewalk connection, so they did show two potential areas, the north side and the south side of Hazelton Boulevard, with their preference being on the north side, and staff, both on the planning side, but also public work side of things, have evaluated those options and have are recommending that the south side be implemented with this plan, and that's for a couple reasons. The north side would require coordination with multiple property owners to be able to put that in. The south side is only one property owner, which is Hazelton Golf Course. There are more utility corridors that exist on the north side, so there's more challenges in terms of feasibility on the north side that don't exist on the south. As well as, a direct connection can occur on the south side into the existing pedestrian facilities to the west of Huntermark Road. This is a safer connection point from staff's point of view, so that direction of pedestrians should be emphasized here instead of the north side. And then per policy and how we've looked at things, the sidewalk connections need to go or should go on the same side as where the development is occurring, so that would be consistent with what's happening here. So just want to reiterate some things that the applicant will have to work on for final, some that I've stated and others that might be new on this slide here. So again, looking at the removal or combination of that east service entry into the site, combined with the main vehicle entrance. Also looking at adequate fire access to the proposed villas, specifically on the north and south sides. There's just a few modifications that'll need to happen to meet adequacy for fire access. And then lastly, the provision of a sidewalk on the south side of Hazelton Boulevard, consistent with the trail section that's to the west of Huntermark Road, providing that consistency all the way through. So in conclusion, you're making two motions this evening. Staff is asking or recommending you to make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan for the Hazelton National Golf Course northwest side of the site, and then based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. And then the second motion is regarding the rezoning to recommend approval of the rezoning from open to planned multi-use district PMD 23, and then based on the draft ordinance that's provided in your packet. This is a public hearing this evening with the rezoning. And if this moves forward this evening, it will go to city council on Monday, May 20th. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions. We do have the applicant here as well.
Thank you. Like Liz said, it's a public hearing. I will open that up in a moment. First, to bring it back to commission. Any discussions, questions for city staff? I do want to say first off, I do think I'm in agreement with the city on the sidewalk, the entrance. Parking seems to be covered. They could lose a little, but they're going to shuttle like they always do. Personally, I don't think it's a non-starter to have the sidewalk on the north side. For me, I just feel like other property owners, they have the property that they're developing, could put the sidewalk in where it should be. Otherwise, it's a mess.
Seems like you're directing things, but in a day, who was asking for the sidewalk? It wasn't staff. It wasn't Hazelton. It was the neighbors to the north.
Yeah, the neighbors, yep.
So.
They love to cross the crosswalk, and so they could work with.
No, hear me out. So who are the property owners to the north side? The city and the HOAs that actually are for the townhomes that actually live there. So I guess that's not much coordination from the landowners, because city's one of them, and the HOA, which actually represents the the residents is the other one. So if the residents want a sidewalk, that's where it should be. I didn't see the city actually put a sidewalk. When they completed the loop, there's a crosswalk to get from the corner up across Hazelton Boulevard to the loop, but stops there. There's no sidewalk. There's no sidewalk trying to invite those neighbors to walk to the loop. So I'm the opposite of going on the sidewalk. It's the just because there's a development going there doesn't necessarily constitute that they should have to put it there, and then also maintain it for the next 40 or 50 years because of what's decided today for the benefit of somebody that lives just to the north. So I'm.
How about the entrance?
The combination of the east, I want to understand what the what the use of that east service access is, because there's a reason for it being there. I don't know what it is. I guess I would be interested in the hearing from the applicant as to what what issues come with the recommendation of trying to combine the east and the main entrance. Personally, I don't I don't know what the purpose of it is, so I would like to hear on that one. And parking? Yeah, parking, we know shuttling. The big event is going to be a shuttle, everything else. It seems like they're going to be able to handle with the additional parking lot that they've got, so it actually is probably going to make it easier for them to host the mid-sized stuff.
Any questions for staff, city, from other commissioners?
Actually, I do have one is the city's recommendation of actually making the sidewalk a 10-foot wide, which matches the bike path that's there around Kohl's and the apartments. Why would we be extending a 10-foot path to a dead end on a private golf club? So like I said, there's so many things that just doesn't work well with the sidewalk kind of getting pushed down, that I guess it's the the city's using the easy button, saying it's like, well, you're developing, so you've got to take care of it versus actually solving the situation that was brought up by the residents because of. So why is it 10 feet wide?
It's to provide continuity with the section to the west. I think there's probably additional evaluation that needs to go into that from a feasibility standpoint. I think we need to start there to provide that continuity. But with spacing and providing a boulevard, green space, it might need to be shaved down a little bit to also preserve trees out there too. So there might be some push and pull on that for us to evaluate.
Is there an alternative of using the on-street?
What was that?
Is there an alternative of using on-street similar to the options that was presented in the the walk-and-bike chaska? You know, it's like, can we use the north side of that and carve off a walking path that doesn't constitute actually putting a sidewalk in, but it gives the residents a path to be able to get to out of the neighborhood that's safe? That would, I mean, to me, that would be another alternative that isn't even talked about here of what can we do for on-street?
And I think, again, we want to promote the safest and the most contiguous connection on the forefront. And if we need to look at other options, because that doesn't work for some reason, then we can absolutely explore those options. But I think from staff's standpoint, from a safety perspective and from cohesive perspective, we would recommend that we initially look at a matching trail section that's on the west side.
I will open the public hearing, but the applicant wants to come up. I'll open the public hearing at 9:26.
Thank you. Thanks again to our staff for helping coordinate with this process. It's been very impactful, so thank you. I think the two items that we just want to address is at the entrance. We do have multiple areas for exiting. When we are running major events, when we've got traffic coming in, even through our modified gatehouse, we've done that to certainly provide a better safety element for the community and the neighbors that are in that area, which certainly took those notes and tried to really incorporate that. The exit that we have that's adjacent to it provides another exit. So if we have security, if we get a dignitary, if we need to have somebody with multiple areas to get out of the property during a major event, it's helpful for us to have that opportunity comparatively to combine it all at once. What I'd also say is from the number of parking spots that we have, if we go right down the street to the Hazelton Professional Building, there's three exits out of that building with less parking spots. So that's really our rationale, reasoning of why we need multiple areas to get delivery trucks in and out, and if we need something for safety, security, to get people in and out of there, we request to have that opportunity. From a sidewalk perspective, we again heard from our neighborhood, and we want to make sure that we're a good neighbor. There's 208 residences on that side of the property to the north. We're putting in eight villas. Our eight villas that we're looking at, I don't envision any of them leaving our property on foot. They're not going to. So when we think about that, we're concerned about putting the sidewalk in on our side and having the entire neighborhood moving across earlier on in that process and inviting for a crosswalk earlier on. We've already got the crosswalk down closer to the loop. We would love to see the sidewalk on the north side. We've done engineering studies, and we believe that there's enough room in the right-of-way to address that without dealing with HOA and others. So we think that there's enough ample space to use right-of-way to put that sidewalk into that area. So that's our recommendation. We think it's way safer and a better experience for certainly the neighborhood, 208 residences to stay on that side of the property, walk up towards the loop, and then use the crosswalk back over into certainly the residential and shopping center areas.
So on that east side up by the the gatehouse, if you will, the extra entrances, there there's three then. There's three entrances, and you want to keep all three?
We would like to keep all three. We see the first one that occurs as a wonderful opportunity to use deliveries. So it's a larger area from a swing standpoint into where we have our really lower level of our dock. So as we've mapped that out and routed it through our parking lot, it's a much easier swing to get into that position by utilizing our first service entrance upon arrival. It solves certainly as they exit using that additional service entry separate from the gatehouse to leave the property as well. So it gives us two different options where we're not really backing up traffic or doing anything at the gatehouse with larger trucks or deliveries. So we've looked at the flow of kind of our parking lot, how we want that to enter and exit by having both. It certainly addresses that situation for different sized vehicles that we'd like to be able to keep streamlining through. We only have about on a given morning, probably three to six deliveries from larger trucks, but we'd like to keep that flow separate from the gatehouse.
Those are gated meanings.
Everything's going to be gated. They all look the same.
Friends to the north or east of the gatehouse?
You've got one, the one to the east would certainly allow for mid-sized vehicles or delivery trucks to exit on that right side. It also gives us certainly an opportunity from a tournament perspective to have another area of opportunity to get in and out of the property, which we think is important.
Love exiting on foot from the tournament. So just to kind of play devil's advocate for the sidewalk.
Typically, Hazelton Boulevard is going to be shut down except for residents. So you're not going to have foot traffic walking in through that main entrance. All of the anything on foot would be certainly coming onto our property from a parking standpoint. Or certainly working from across the high school from a shuttle service like we did for the last Ryder Cup, but we've got that. Working with the county and with the city, I'm certainly having that opportunity to have foot traffic coming in from the from that side of the property on Pioneer. So you wouldn't have any foot traffic coming in through that main entrance to the to the property. Even for our next event, the USAM, there won't be any foot traffic that'll come in through that main entrance, and that's a much smaller event than certainly some of the ones that we're talking about.
Have you so continuing on with the sidewalk? Have you spoken? So obviously, the city is part of landowner on the north side. There was talk of maybe there's infrastructure and utilities in the way. I mean, you're prepared to cover, pay, like to figured out all that, maybe talking to the landowners of the HOA. They're in favor of a sidewalk on that side?
Not talk to the owners of the HOA. We certainly talked to a number of the residents that live in that area that would really love to see a sidewalk in place. I do think that we have some things that we would need to work through with staff. I think some of the grading that's in that area, some of the infrastructure from a gas standpoint. We have some things that we would ask to that we would need to work through to try to implement something on that side.
So what I don't want to see is no sidewalk? So if you go down that path and like, oh, it doesn't work because the gas or whatever, and then like, I mean, it comes back with no sidewalk.
We would just prefer not to have it on our side of the property. We don't, we think it's a safety concern with two hundred and eight residents on the other side of the street. We just don't think it's the right thing to do.
So I don't think it's really, yeah, because the, well, I don't understand the safety concern is. I'm not trying to like put you on the spot here, but because they have to cross, they cross when they get over this side either.
Multiple stops on on Hazelton Boulevard. You've already got it down at the loop where you've got that crosswalk coming across, and now you're going to add more further up the streets. You're in multiple situations that as you come down Hazelton Boulevard, you've got crosswalks.
I just want to clarify from our public works standpoint of safety, the crosswalk that's currently on Hazelton Boulevard that Phil mentioned, I'll actually try to bring up a a site map here. But we've been told that that's an unsafe crossing because of the intersection and having it on the west side of that intersection, being able to have a crosswalk on the east side of Huntermark Road. As you get more into the residential side would.
Further up, you mean?
Yes, further east would be preferred from a safety standpoint.
Yeah, like Huntermark and Hazelton right there, especially with the apartment building, you know, we have a lot of traffic and like that existing crosswalk. Seems a little busy there, right? I mean, that's especially when you're turning the corner.
That's not going to change. I mean, it's actually going to get worse because you know, I don't put the apartments right there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like that existing, that's what I'm saying, that existing crosswalk seems busy.
So does the city, that puts it back to.
They want to put it, same just same as you want to move it to the east, like further into the neighborhood or?
Right. So the one I was mentioning is this one right here.
Yeah, that one seems.
The sting. And again, bringing a crosswalk on the east side here would be safer. And and again, to emphasize the the point of having this the south side of Hazelton Boulevard with a cross or with a sidewalk would allow movements to happen more internally here down to the south side and across an already established crosswalk here.
So they just get somebody across on Huntermark versus Hazelton. For for crossing.
So what's the city's recommendation to actually make that crosswalk to the loop safe? Because it's there. People are going to walk to, I mean, those anybody that lives in that apartment is going to walk across the street to the loop. How are you going to make it safe? I'm assuming you're going to put some kind of button there to stop traffic or notify people that somebody's walking, I'm guessing. So.
Mr. Olson, Chair. I I think the 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 point that Liz is attempting to make is that the current configuration is not the ideal crosswalk configuration. In order to make it safer. You know, that would occur at the time that there's a road construction project occurring. I think as we're evaluating it and we're looking at options. You know, staff's recommendation on the south side, trying to make it a safer crossing at Huntermark as opposed to Hazelton, given the current situation. Is that we would prefer not to add to an undesirable situation by making that a more used crosswalk.
It's so yeah, so Hazelton is at Huntermark. There's a stop, you're stopped there.
Yes, and it, you know.
Hazelton, the traffic's just coming. So that's.
Also looking at configuration of a sidewalk and how that would fit in the current right-of-way. And the configuration of Huntermark as it goes eastward from Hazel, I'm sorry, Hazelton Boulevard is supposed eastward from Huntermark. There is limited space there. Our engineer's assessment is that the ability to put this cross or I'm sorry, the sidewalk in a configuration that city would want to see is way more feasible on the south side than the north side.
If it works, our safety would it would be better to cross Huntermark than to cross Hazelton. Assuming we're talking about the residents coming from that neighborhood, not someone going to the loop, which is a different problem, but the purpose of this sidewalk for, you know, is for these residents. I'm doing this. You can't see it's my my map. It's over here. But coming down, so you they prefer them to cross Huntermark. Where traffic is stopped.
That is staff's recommendation.
Yeah, versus crossing Hazelton, which is the existing one there. Because traffic just keeps coming.
Back to the point, they're currently walking right now. I mean, there's no sidewalk there. There hasn't been a sidewalk there for the twenty-plus years that they've lived there. So why is a sidewalk needed now?
To make it safe. Yeah, I mean, it's just because there's a wrong, does it mean that?
You're going to play the safety card. Don't play the safety card. Two hundred residents that live. Golf course. What has the city done for the safety of them for the last twenty years?
And they built those that that there should have been a sidewalk.
Exactly.
So why should Hazelton have to pay for it?
This wrong doesn't make it right.
I agree.
I mean, this is the part where it's the the city did not present well on making it pedestrian friendly when that development came through. They lived.
When was that? I mean, how many decades ago? Like, things change, and here we have the opportunity to try to make it safer, right?
Yeah, but is it property owner's responsibility?
But it's somebody else's.
Generally, yes, like moving through developments.
But they're offering to do it on the other side. We're not, no, we're leaving the property out, and we're and we're willing to, we're willing to help and explore doing it correctly. I think the other part is what the apartment complex going in, that crosswalk to the loop is going to be busy. So I mean, we need to.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, no, I'm not.
So that's the part where it's like, we got to be careful when you start about safety.
Well, you made it sound like you didn't want a sidewalk at all.
No, I'm just saying, it's like you can't use safety as the reason for it needing to be on the south side of the street because right now they're currently walking both sides of this.
Well, sure, you could.
Probably crossing at that as well, too, but.
If I have public safety in the city telling me that they think it's safer on that side, I'm going to take their recommendation as experts, just like if I have an engineer tell me that this bridge is safe.
There hasn't been any change.
I'm not going to disregard experts' opinion.
But there hasn't been any change for the last twenty years for those people that have lived there. And we're not, we're not adding, they're not changing, I mean, they're slightly changing the number of the number of cars, the traffic side of things is negligible. They're they're not adding residents.
So are you in favor of no sidewalk then? Is that what you're saying? Because like it'd be, you're arguing to be like, well, you have lead paint in your house and like we shouldn't take it out just because it hasn't been a problem before.
I'm.
I mean, I like, I just want to understand what your position is, like no sidewalks or?
oven is written right now, I am not agreeing with other because it says it has to be a ten-foot bike path.
I understand that, but like that'd be the minutia of it, but I meant like sidewalk.
That's what the city is asking for.
Sidewalk or no sidewalk completely? That's what I'm trying to understand.
On the south side?
Just in general, like altogether, like no, you made it sound like you want no sidewalk.
No sidewalk on the south side?
No, I'm talking about that. Okay, fine.
Right now, there's no, right now, there's no sidewalk.
But you're okay on the north side?
If there's a sidewalk on the north?
Yeah. Okay, that's what I. Like it just, we started off, it made it sound like you didn't want any sidewalk.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I I'm not in agreement with with how it's.
Okay, okay.
Has to be here and it has to be this size.
Okay, all right. I just want to understand where people sit because like you made it sound, I mean, you first started off, they didn't want any sidewalk.
No.
Okay, got it.
But it needs to be on the north side.
Yeah.
So. That's the part. So and that was my stance.
Last time we talked about it.
And the city came back with the, well, it's too much work for the city to work with the property owners on the north side, and there's a couple of other things, but there's other alternative, there's other avenues to be able to go through versus saying it has to be what is presented on the state report. That's that's my stance. So. Back to the part where a sidewalk on the north side is perfectly fine.
According to you, but not the experts, safety experts.
But it's not a safety problem.
Well, according to them, it is. They're our safety board, right?
Hold up.
So I mean, like that'd be the same as like, you're not an engineer, I'm just going to trust your opinion. Like, I mean, I'm not trying to like come down on you, but like, you know what I'm saying?
Safer up here, you saw, kind of say, so.
Yeah, exactly.
It's that part, but at the end of the day, it comes back down to if it was a concern, it was a safety concern, it should have been addressed by the city.
Okay.
Anytime in the last two, three decades.
At least we're in agreement. We want a sidewalk.
Correct.
Yeah.
And they're and 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 the golf course is willing to help with that, but not on their property because ultimately they're going to be responsible for maintaining it for the next god number of years, and they're going to get zero benefit from it. Actually, it's probably going to be more of a hindrance because they have to maintain it, and it changes their dynamic dynamics of their 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 landscaping plan and whatnot. So those are the parts where it's like, we're trying to push this for them with no benefit because they're coming through with a proposal that doesn't really change much of the surrounding area to the impact to the to the neighbors. That's it.
For the city. Can you elaborate on the safety concern on the north side? And is there anything to elaborate on?
I don't know that I have a whole lot to elaborate beyond what's been discussed at this point. I think the concern is the current configuration of the crosswalk. You know, the traffic movements and volumes that are currently on Hazelton Boulevard is compared to configuration of Huntermark. And, you know, at the risk of going too far down the road of being an engineer, I tend to trust our city engineer's valuation. And recommendation, and that's what we're carrying forward.
So the city engineer said there's no option for the north side?
Ask the city staff just to come with a recommendation for the best option. I think our city engineer is very talented and capable of creating options in many ways, but his recommendation for the best option is on the south side.
I like to hear then from the applicant, like why don't they want it on this? Just for curiosity, why don't they want it on the south side? I mean, for the the real reason is probably for privacy, right?
They said that in the the concept plan.
It's, well, I think he said it was for safety. He's trying to say it's for safety.
No, it's privacy.
Right, but he's telling us it's safety. But it's privacy for real, probably, right? Like, I'm able to imagine. Why is Hazelton opposed to the south side?
Why?
Yeah.
I think.
Outside of safety.
Yeah, I think it may a couple of things. We don't, we don't envision anyone from our property using that sidewalk, number one. Number two, I think when we look at the area that we're developing with villas, par three course, short course. We envision privacy in that area as much as possible. You know, when we think of major events or even just our day to day, we're really looking, you saw the landscape and kind of put together. We want as much privacy in that area as as possible. So those are a couple of the reasons why. Our engineer also is with us and has looked at certainly the the walking component of it and been looking with the team. And thinks that we could have some other solutions, too, to to figuring out how you get people crossing, you know, in a safe manner in that area, but we're worried about we have some residents that are members of the club that live in that area that do already make that cross and walk over into the club. I think if we invite all residents in that upper area, I'm just worried about people as we've redesigned kind of our entrance and exit, we've, we think we've made strides in creating a safer area. And if we start having everyone cross over further up in an area, we're going to, you're going to be starting and stopping, coming right out of that that entrance as a whole. So we just don't, it's not where we believe it should be. And we're happy to work with the team, you know, as we move into final approval and continue through a process here to come up with the solution. We want to work to figure out what is best. We're not opposing a sidewalk. Not our our stance. We want to find out where is the best spot to do it.
I think obviously Hazelton's a great asset to the city, to the community. Please come on up. Public hearing is still open, have not closed yet.
I'm John Getch, and I live at Five Hazelton Estates.
Yep.
Which is the first building as you go on to Birdie Lane, so right at the very, almost right at the entrance of the Hazelton property. The the sidewalk, I walk down to you know, Home Depot.
Del area, yeah.
Of everything. And then I've I've lived there for fifteen years now. And, yeah, it always amazed me that there wasn't some way to walk down there because if you ask me, what do I do? I walk down usually on the south side. And come back on the south side and in any traffic, I can step off on the Hazelton property, but that doesn't work in the winter. And so that's just my concern that, you know, something needs to be done there because I know almost everybody on Birdie Lane walks down there for good exercise. And and I know same thing for Carver's Green. The major problem coming up on the north side is the grade from the entrance into Hazelton Shores, coming up, the grade is steeper there than on the south side. And then once you get up to between the two entrances into Carver's Green, there's a high-pressure gas line. They put in, maybe just reworked that about six, seven years ago, and was, it's not something easy, and they redid the whole line down through there. And that's kind of utilities, I think, that mentioned there is the problem, because it's, that's not something you wanna mess with.
So, in your, I mean, you're not, you're just one resident, I understand. Like, so you're, like, your opinion is you would prefer it on the south side?
Either side.
Either side. You just want a sidewalk. Okay.
It works.
All residents.
I understand, I very much understand the concern about, um, Hazelton, putting it in, and it really doesn't benefit them much. There are a few members. Um, you know, I beg to differ, you know, I would like to have it easy to to walk in. I'm a member at, social member at Old Hazelton. And, um, it's not always the easiest to walk into it, and I think they're gonna be addressing some of that um, as far as walking into the club.
Yeah.
But as far as going down there, um, almost all the time, I end up over on the south side, walking down because of, mainly because of the grade. But either side would work.
Okay.
And it doesn't need to be ten foot wide.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, but I think something, because it's it's mainly just gonna be foot traffic, and it's, um, there are times when it's not safe to walk down there when there, and events letting out, there's a lot of traffic coming out.
Yeah.
And so, um, well, thank you.
Yep. So, back to the city on entrance, I'm gonna switch gears. First of all, is there anyone else that wants to address the commission public hearing? Okay, the applicant can come up again if he wants later. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Is there anyone online? You're free to still come, I'm just gonna, for the rest of the.
Yeah, I'm not.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing at nine fifty. Um, back to the city on the entrances, just tabling the sidewalk for a second. Seemed as if city really wanted to try to limit that down to one entrance. After that, correct, on the east side, where they have.
On on the east side.
Yeah.
I think we're still amenable to the the west service entry still, uh, remaining, um, but since on the east side, there's that spacing conflict.
Three entrances plus Birdie Lane.
Right. Yep. Looking at, um, combining that, whatever function possible, just to limit the amount of, um, conflict points that are on Hazelton Boulevard.
Burn.
Access points, and what you're referencing to as you're exiting the site.
Gated, the gated service entrances that are only used a few times.
We use them daily, right? We just said, for deliveries and stuff?
Yeah, I think both of those would probably be used somewhere between three and let's call it ten times a day on the high side, uh, with their with their deliveries. Obviously, as we get to events, it's different. As we get to USAM and different events, I'd I would prefer to not have or other events in the future, excuse me, not USAM, but as we move into those areas, we'd like to have multiple areas to have flow coming in and out, where you've got, you know, tons of delivery trucks coming to the club. We we think it'd be helpful to have multiple areas to exit.
So more than, just use the west entrance?
Think if we combined it into one there, you're gonna have all of your three hundred and fifty-five parking spots exiting at one spot, and then we're gonna send, try to send your delivery trucks into that same spot. We don't wanna send necessarily delivery trucks all the time back around to that first entrance, because then they're taking that left-hand turn out of there. It's seamless to come right out into, onto Hazelton Boulevard from that right side. Certainly a birdie lane there with four residences that we'd have to be cognizant with those deliveries, but we do that today. I mean, that that is existing today.
So the political advocate here, I mean, like, as you said, you get six to ten, damn, I mean, is it that big of a deal to combine at least two of them together and you have one extra exit? I mean, you're not getting, like, tons of traffic.
I've seen tons, but it certainly, I think, as we look at our Hazelton experience, if we have members and guests coming in, we'd we'd prefer to keep delivery trucks and things separated. That's just our preferred experience within the park, and a lot of how we'd like that to flow.
I see it. It's it's more of the keeping this, you have your, you have your members, and then you have your, and I hate saying, you don't mix.
Yeah.
It's, you keep them separate.
Because you go to interlock, and there's one entrance.
Correct.
Go to a diner, there's one.
Somewhere else.
That's, that's, that's their right, so.
Yeah, no, I'm just, just like, I'm just curious if you, you know, if it's not used much. And so, exiting events, cars exit, I've always walked there or settled there.
That area, if you, if you had a certain player that you're trying to get in and out of the of there, or if you've got your Ryder Cup team that's gonna be up at the clubhouse, and you're walking out, to not have them going through the main gate, to have separate entrances that we can get different transportation, the roads already closed during those, but we'd like to have different options to make sure that when we go through security detail, different components beyond just delivery trucks, when we get to major events, to have multiple points is helpful comparatively to one or two.
So two's not workable? If you get rid of one next to the.
We can, we can make it work. I just would point out from a parking standpoint, if three is a problem, I mean, if we go right down the street at the professional building, there's less parking spots, there's three, three opportunities. We're asking for the same thing with more parking and certainly more logistical components of what we do. Can we make it work? We would make it work. I just would prefer not to. I I think, I just wanna comment, too, I think both that and, uh, certainly the provision that we're talking about with sidewalks, we we wanna work into the final team with our engineering, with with certainly the city staff to to come up with the best resolutions as we come back. That's that's what we're committed to.
I think how number conditions nine to ten are written, it's difficult to make a motion with as as they're written, because it's it's stipulating what the answer is going to be. You know, with the combining of the two entrances and saying the sidewalk has to be on the south side, you know, this is the part where there aren't answers.
Ten, the sidewalk one?
Ten's, uh.
Oh, that's a.
Sorry, eleven. Sorry, nine, eleven.
Yeah, I, okay, yeah, go on.
Because that pigeonholes to say that's what the answer's gotta be.
Right.
Whereas I don't think either one of those, as it's written, is the way it needs to be. Or the people can think differently, but, you know, there's a valid reason why they have the service roads they do. And it's for the experience.
Yeah.
Not a member, but I would guess that you don't wanna mix the box trucks with the cars.
Yeah, I can see that.
Take your pick.
Yep.
Sidewalk, I've already said it, so. So I think we need to make some adjustments to the conditions that we have listed.
What the rest of the commission chat about it, talk? I mean, like, to hear you guys' opinions, so we can figure this out.
To me, the sidewalk makes more sense on the north side.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
And I agree with the three entrances.
Yeah, and it doesn't need to be ten feet wide.
No, of course.
Regular sized sidewalk.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm open, I mean, came in, I thought it made more sense in the south. I'm I'm open to, as long as we have a sidewalk, I'm open, as long as they're willing to figure it out and take care of it.
If we can't, and there's huge utilities that have.
Can't, and it's like, it comes back, it's like, well.
South side.
Gotta have it somewhere.
Yes.
We got to have a sidewalk for sure.
Right.
Respect to whether it's north or south.
Fourth grade, south?
Fine.
The north is the heavy grade, and so then there's a big expense for moving or adjusting.
Well, and that's what I'm saying.
For what's under the grade, yeah.
There's a ton of utilities.
They're saying they're willing to do it.
I don't know, are they paying for it?
Yeah, they are.
They're like, wait, let me clarify.
The city is not.
I was like, I don't know if he flat out said that.
Participate.
Participate. Yeah.
I would just request that we have the opportunity to explore it.
Yeah.
As we go to final stages, we've all agreed that.
Okay.
We wanna, in good faith, explore that, and I I don't just wanna commit to a percentage or say X, Y, Z. We'd like to explore that with the team.
Exchange for three entrances.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, I'm indifferent to the entrances.
Yeah.
Fees, that's.
Well, I get where the city's coming from, and just in, just the same as as, so on the entrance, I understand the concern, because you have all these, you got Hazelton, you got Birdie Lane, the extension, it kind of curves around, you got split road already, then you got three entrances, and the same idea is like on the west where we where they, you know, they wanted to move it, and then it becomes off-center. You know, and we try to do developments, we try not to do offset stops, you know, that causes fender benders, and so the same idea, you've got all these things, they've been making it work. I don't, I don't know if there's been a heavy, there's been many accidents up there. I mean, I don't, I wouldn't know, but there's been any huge complication, it seems as if it's been okay, um, so.
Since that one is tucked.
Right.
Tucked in.
It's tucked, yeah.
One on the west side, it's very visible and you.
Right.
Well, for sure. And if, especially at times of high events, and they're coming out, and you got a disjointed thing, I mean, it makes more sense to be in coordination with the other side.
And they maintain all their own entrances, right? It's not a city.
So I, you know.
I mean, to your, to your point, do they need three for that, you know, not a ton of traffic, but then it's like, hey, it's not a ton of traffic, so who cares if there's three? Like, it goes both ways, so.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying? I mean.
Not really a problem.
It's not a problem. Yeah. I don't, I don't see it being that big of a problem to have three.
And, like I said, you know, there's that high-profile person, though, security-wise.
Oh, yeah, that'll come in handy, yeah.
Exactly.
That'll come in handy. Absolutely.
I mean, the thing is, past the entrance here, there's not much, there's not like, it's not like this is a major road with lots of travel, so it's like.
No.
Like, you know, understand. So, okay, so going back to is it the, we can find out and vote, but the majority, so let's talk about, so we can figure this out, but majority of the commission is nine and eleven. Not adequate the way that's written, majority opinion here?
Yep.
Correct. So nine is the entrance. Would you just want to, there's a maintenance service. Just remove nine and have them rework with city on that? Just.
If there's something there, let.
Yeah, for the both.
Agreed.
And eleven, instead of it being stipulated at this point, explore both options as long as a sidewalk comes back.
A sidewalk.
Perfect, perfect.
Correct.
Yes.
We wanna remove nine and change eleven.
Yeah, eleven to the south or north, yeah, we can make it.
Possible potential for north side still.
Yeah.
But as long as a sidewalk comes back for.
Yes. Agreed.
Okay. So that, that it will withstand. Um, would someone like to make a motion then, with those changes?
Make an option if I don't have to repeat all that.
So, the motion, uh, which, it'll be. It'll be fourteen conditions to remove nine.
Yes.
And also eleven to include potential of a north sidewalk.
Correct. Explain the option, as long as we have a sidewalk at the end of the day, yes.
There's second.
So, that's true, Pat. We'll.
Pedestrian pass sidewalk, some some sort of.
Yeah.
Okay. Whatever you wanna call it, but.
Yes.
We had a motion by Kerber in the second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to recommend the approval of the rezoning from open to planned multi-use district, PMD twenty-three.
There's a second?
A second.
Yeah, Austin and Olson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the final action item. Carlson Bluffs. Say Ashley again?
Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna make this brief with that.
It's great.
Appreciate it.
I was calling up my presentation this evening, because we're still. We have been here now for, going on three hours and still having them.
Yeah.
Uh, this evening, their proposal by Johnson and.
You guys don't see the screen yet.
No. You know, and I.
Working on this eventually.
I think I had this wrong, too, when we, real quick, when we talked previously to our meeting.
There we go.
Maybe we should consider doing the contentious one for, um, last.
Yes.
For some, like.
Smaller ones out of the way.
With the process.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, just going to.
It, there's positive and negatives to that, I would say, because otherwise you would have a very crowded room still here, uh, and you would feel that pressure, and sometimes, uh, it, uh, kind of just sets the tone, if you will, uh, for certain meetings, but.
There's going on.
Uh, okay, so Carlson Bluffs, uh, proposal by Johnson and Ryland Homes, uh, out at thirty-six seventy-five Big Woods Boulevard. Uh, this evening, they are before you, uh, with the rezoning and preliminary that request. Uh, we are currently in the second phase of our three-step process. Uh, as the planning commission knows, that's a more technical review. Uh, generally, we're starting to see those civil drawings and those reports, and we're starting to see the resolution to those issues that were identified uh, as part of the concept plan. The existing site is fifteen and a half acres. Uh, there's some pretty significant topography on the site, if you recall from the, from, and this was before you in February. There are three areas of steep slope. Uh, those areas are identified in red, and and by ordinance, steep slope means, uh, that those slopes are exceeding eighteen percent. Uh, the applicant inventory two hundred trees within the area of the site disturbance. And, uh, those trees include a mix of juniper, ash, elm, and box elder species. Uh, the applicant was, again, before you, uh, just a few months ago in February, uh, they were showing a fourteen-lot subdivision with a five-acre outlot. Uh, at that time, uh, you had discussed continuity of the development, uh, as it related to River Town Heights second development. Uh, you also had some discussion regarding, uh, setbacks and whether or not the proposed ones, uh, were appropriate, uh, for this particular site. As part of that conversation, uh, there was also some discussion, uh, about those plots and the expectation, uh, that they may or may not set, uh, for future developments. Oops, I'm just trying to just keep it real long, and I computer is way faster than mine, I guess. Uh, the council reviewed the concept plan, uh, just a few weeks later at their February meeting. Uh, they echo a lot of your same comments. Uh, they also enquired about just the notification area and construction timing. Uh, they had some pretty significant discussion, uh, about the development name, uh, which was discussed with second official. I I think it's like auto-advancing.
I think it is.
They keep trying to flip that, so. Uh, the rules over this evening, uh, is is similar to what you saw as part of the concept plan. Uh, still fourteen lots. Uh, the main change, uh, that you will notice is the applicant did revise, uh, those rear lot lines to generally align with, uh, the theory, but no, 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 great setback, uh, as we, uh, uh, required as part of the concept plan review. As part of that, uh, you will notice in your staff report that the lot areas and the lot lists, uh, were slightly reduced down, uh, to eleven thousand to thirty-one thousand square feet, and the lot list ranging from sixty to two hundred and sixty-three feet wide. As part of that, uh, there was a second outlot, uh, so initially, there was just one five-acre outlot, uh, that is now Outlet A, that will continue to be uh, owned by the current property owner, the Crosons, uh, for future development. But there was a second outlot that was added, roughly two acres in size, uh, on the north, which is to the right of the screen, uh, and that is for steep slope protection. New homes, uh, these are consistent with what you saw, uh, as a concept plan, they would start roughly eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, they would be three or four thousand and up in terms of square feet. Existing on two stories, two or three car garages, and then there are setbacks, uh, would be twenty-three feet in front, uh, with five-foot sides and twenty-foot rares. So again, consistent with what you saw. Uh, utilities are available from River Town Heights to the west, uh, they would be continued through, uh, the development in. in that. Uh, the stormwater design for River Town Heights, uh, second addition to the west, did contemplate continuation uh, for this development, and so stormwater from uh, Carlson Bluffs would be collected and essentially directed, uh, to that infrastructure as part of that development. There is included as a condition of approval. My apologies, uh, just some additional information needed, uh, related to stormwater as part of the next review, uh, just to ensure, uh, that there are the smaller areas, uh, that uh, staff is, excuse me. Just to ensure that the small minor areas, uh, within the plant, uh, the stormwater is captured there and it's not running down the steep slope for those larger qualifying rate events. So just briefly and quickly moving through, uh, staff's analysis. Uh, properties sound, oh, uh, for open development, uh, before you this evening is for request to resolve, uh, to PRD and residential district. Uh, the comp plan guides this property for low density and open space. Uh, the density before you this evening, uh, is two-point-two units per acre, so within, uh, the guided density. Lot configurations, uh, again, are generally consistent with what you saw as part of the concept time review phase. Uh, the only change is that rear lot line uh, shifting, uh, that was originally required by planning commission and city's council. And staff finds that those proposed setbacks are reasonable, consistent with what was approved as part of the concept plan. And really helps, uh, shift, allow for that greater preservation of the steep slopes in the rear. So with that, I'm gonna turn it back to you for any questions.
Thank you, Ashley. Another public hearing, first, again, huge audience left. We will discuss amongst ourselves and I'll open it up. Is there any questions for city staff? First.
On the high side of things, it'll, it'll, it'll be interesting to see the tree preservation, you know, on those few lots and on the 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 edge of the property lines, to be able to hone in, identify which ones can actually be saved, um, there on the, you know, the three that are abutting the, uh, the other property as well as the ones that don't have the steep slopes side of things, so. I know the staff had that in the report, so it's the, making sure that that does become a, uh, an important side, because those are significant trees that can't be replaced, so the, the more that we can save that are on the edge that aren't, you know, if they just don't go and clear cut, it's the, let's, let's identify those that actually can be saved and incorporated into, into the neighborhood, that would be great. That's it.
I don't have any questions for city, because I kind of talked through things ahead of time. I mean, I, I, I like the lot lines to change, I think that's more appropriate. You have the no-mo, there's gonna be just a natural area in the steep slopes, there's gonna be some signage out there, um. I don't like ghost plats, I'll say it again. But, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions. I'm so, because I can open the public hearing. If you have anything, the city. Okay, at ten, twelve, I'll open the public hearing if anyone like to address the commission. Anyone online? Okay. I will close the public hearing at ten, twelve. Um, guess it's getting late, I don't have anything else.
Actually, a question on the, the, the no-mo, the thirty-foot no-mo, so is it truly gonna be the honor system with just signs that? Because normally, normally we have them as outlots, so that it's not even the property owner's side of things, but it's appears that the steep slope is going to be their property, so. One's gonna prevent them from.
What city staff say, but I'll tell you from my personal experience, I had a house with wetland. And there's a wetland buffer and it was a no-mo, and yes, it's a honor system. Most, in the neighborhood that I was in, everyone played by their rules. But, I mean, there's, obviously, we're not gonna send police, oh, they're not gonna, we're not gonna police it, but yes, so what's the official answer?
Uh, Chair and Commissioner, the only thing I would add to that is, uh, just that as part of final plat review, we've asked just for some additional signage information, it just how the applicant is planning to, you know, ensure that that steep slope is protected. I will also say it is on the honor system. The city staff will go out and enforce it, uh, just like anything else, when there's enforcement issues, when we receive a complaint, and I can tell you that, uh, that will happen if if there are violations.
Uh, that, that's, but I, I was, I need to hear that side.
We had an honor system in our neigh, violent neighborhood and everyone was pretty good.
Except that one guy.
Yeah.
The only question I have is. So there's two hundred and nine primarily juniper, ash, elm. Do we know how many are ash trees?
So they'll probably be dead in a couple of years.
They already are.
Chair and Commissioner.
Oh, they have the inventory, so.
Yeah, the inventory goes through and instantly calls out the different species. I can certainly count them up, uh, if you wanted to invite the applicant, uh, forward, they are here this evening, and I could work on getting that.
This would be a question for the future, because a- as I've seen in my neighborhood, um, actually, there's already been about fifty trees removed, and there's probably another hundred to go.
Just looking at the inventory list, there's like five, almost all of them are juniper.
Oh, that's.
That's good.
So, yeah, there's. I think I only see. Yeah.
Good. Okay. Um, I'm gonna have you. Feel like getting away easy, no, be lethargic here tonight.
To the joy of being the third.
Yeah.
There's, there's, no more questions, is there? If anyone likes me, I mean, I'll just, I'm gonna start it. I'll make a motion, recommend approval to approve the rezoning and preliminary plat of Carlson Bluffs of fourteen, subdivision, subject to the following.
I already interrupted you.
I didn't even make, yeah.
Now, the applicant is here this evening.
Yeah.
I don't know if they have anything to add, but.
Like, it didn't seem like they, I kind of, during the public hearing, I was kind of looking at them and. Did you want to? Okay, yeah.
Make your motion.
Subject to the, yeah, subject to the following seven, seven conditions.
Second.
The second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed motion carries. And that was combined, the rezone and the preliminary, yeah, so. Uh, then we just need to receive in the minutes, I will hereby receive those. Uh, um, after that, I'm pretty much done. Is anyone, any further discussion, anything you want to bring up for the city, anyone working on something, a project or?
Just a question for staff, and that's like current commercial areas. We require so much parking spaces. You go up to Home Depot right now and it's like a third of the parking is all covered, covered with pallets and supplies. Is there anything in the zoning that stops them or would prevent them from doing that?
Yes. It goes back to their. Because we did understand to a certain extent that they would have some seasonal, um, storage out there, um. So there are specific plans that'll have to meet in specific parking requirements. So if that's a, a formal complaint.
It just seems like there's more this year.
It sounds like he's toeing the line on that one.
He got these little driveways set up and he can drive all over the place.
Yeah.
This gets a little difficult sometimes turning in because you can't tell if they're blocking your view.
Sir.
There's a lot.
Yeah. Makes it fun. Just don't walk.
Anything else?
Oh, no. Motion to adjourn.
You get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please. It's so big over there.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for adjourn.